Councilmember Barry.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Elrich. Councilmember Seaman.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum of the council. Are there any council comments or announcements? Bruce?
Yes, I would just like to make sure that everybody realizes that tonight is the official rollout of the web stream, the live web streaming of council meetings. I know I've visited the city website and there are, we have four archived meetings from February which are already on there, but I'm quite happy to see that we've gotten this up and running and it should make information a lot more available to the public, to council, to staff, to anyone who has access to the web to see any portion of our meeting and have full access to all of the various information that goes along with it and I hope that everybody enjoys it.
What's the new address for the website?
Tacoma Park.
Tacoma Park, M D.
M D dot gov.
Thank you.
Are there any other council comments or announcements?
Yes. Has anyone mentioned Jim Saloma?
We just got started.
Just got started, go ahead.
So, yes, I have one very sad announcement. In Ward One last week, we had a break-in that resulted in a resident having a heart attack and dying and the Saloma family is a longstanding family in Tacoma Park. Jennifer Saloma served on the city council and has been a teacher for many years. Jim Saloma, who died, is sorely missed. We're all very sad at his passing and certainly the circumstances for it are a true shock to the community. To brief my council colleagues, I've sent you emails that have gone out to the, to my residents as they've gone out and yesterday in a neighbor's home, the, some community members met and planned for an open community meeting that's coming up this Thursday night and I encourage anyone who's interested in the crime issue and what we can do about it to come Thursday night to Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church and 7:30 is the start time. My focus and I encourage my colleagues to join me is on getting the Tacoma Metro Safety Model set up. We are very interested in replicating the success of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Sea Safety Program and the police chief has laid the important groundwork with her colleagues on other police forces. The mayor and I and other council members have laid the important groundwork with our political colleagues in DC and elsewhere to see this program take shape and what I really hope we can make happen is funding this program during this next budget cycle. I think it's something the community is eager for and certainly that area needs to have crime addressed in a systematic and proactive way, so I look forward to further discussions on that.
And I'm sure the rest of the council joins you in extending our sympathies to the Saloma family. Is there anything else? All right, we will move on now to public comments. This is the time set aside for comments on items that are not on our special session agenda. That would include comments on items that are on our presentation or work session agenda as well as comments on any other topics you'd wish to bring before the council. When you come up to make a comment, we would ask if you would identify yourself and also if you can keep your comments to three minutes and there's a light on the podium that will help you tell when your three minutes are up.
Hello, my name's Mr. Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue Tacoma Park, Ward Four. Number one, I'd like to thank Mr. Terry Seaman and his wife, Joy, for helping us all out with the manna food package. And two, also I'd like to express my condolences for the Saloma family also. Three, I think we should, as adults, since school is ending pretty soon, I think we should try to invite the children to come before the council if possible and give us their ideas to what we should do about the crime and the drugs in our neighborhoods because us adults, you can't seem to get a grip on it and the kids are out there in the schools every day. They may have some ideas on what to do because they're going to be our future leaders. And also I'd like to give you some updates on other things going on. The third anniversary of the war in Iraq is coming up, you know, and we're going to be having some demonstrations in DC along Mass Avenue the weekend of the 18th to the 21st and it's going to end with several demonstrations in and around the Pentagon, you know, and we also got to remember that George Bush, the George, the juggernaut, is not going to stop with the war in Iraq. He has got serious plans about going into Iran. He's already trying to figure out a way to pit Israel in Iran so that they can go to war and then we can go in and bail out the Israeli government with a war and then we're going to continue doing that throughout the Middle East until we have control of the oil fields and that way we can keep our so-called greatest economic enemy to choke them off which the ultimate goal is to choke off China, which is considered our ultimate enemy and I don't want to see this happen in my name. And I think we should all try to be aware of what's going on in our world and try to not just go along with our mainstream media is teaching us, we use our own common sense and our own personal convictions. And yes, I'd like to see the Girl Scouts come up here now that we have the Boy Scouts here and yes, it's very tragic, we lost, you know, Mr. Saloma to the crime and I knew something like this was going to happen and it's going to continue again and going to get worse and worse and worse if we cannot get the root cause of the problem addressed and the root cause, my feeling is, is human indifference toward one another, people living for the moment, worshiping violence and above all, the drug and the gang problem within our own backyard, in our own buildings and in our own hood. We've got to stop it before it stops us. Don't let the drug man, the crack man, rule us. We've got to stand up and be adults and I ask us, maybe we should have the children come in and give us some direction. Thank you very much. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to bring their comments to the council? Thank you, Nellie. All right, seeing no one else, we will move on to the city manager's comments and update. We have the deputy city manager sitting in this evening for the city manager who's out of town.
Just one announcement on the community center. It's, it's very probable that we will not be able to use the council chambers from April 11th through the end of the construction period, which will be probably mid to late May. There would only be one entrance there for the fire marshals since we cannot use it.
Praise the Lord.
Well, we will, we will have-
We'll look at alternatives and report back to you on what we think is good. Just another sad announcement is two of our employees, Patrick and Richard Rittenhouse, were in a serious automobile accident over the weekend. Patrick, who works in communications office, was released today, banged up pretty badly. His brother was still in ICU this morning.
Wow.
So.
We're sorry to hear that. Have, have we communicated with them or said something?
Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah, Lonnie went over today and visited. Karen Hampton went to the hospital also.
Okay. All right, good, well, sorry to hear that, but glad to know.
And I have nothing to say.
Okay. We are moving fairly rapidly this evening. We are, we are now to the presentation, very, very timely entrance here. We had asked for a community presentation on the proposed redevelopment at 7001 Carroll Avenue, which is at the corner of Carroll Avenue and West Moreland Avenue and wanted to make a couple of preliminary comments. We asked the developer to come in and brief the council. A couple of council members had received briefings and I know a couple of neighborhood associations have also, but we thought it would be a good idea to include all the members of the council and anyone from the public who wish to come to the meeting this evening or to watch this on the cable channel. So this is an informational briefing. It is not a formal presentation or a formal application, beginning of the process and it's also not the only opportunity for the council to make comments if you have thoughts. This is actually not a formal opportunity. So this is intended as an informational presentation and the council's questions or thoughts would be informational also. So that's just to clarify in case folks are interested or concerned about where we are in the process. Did you want to say anything?
Yes, actually while the team is setting up, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to introduce the project to everybody in the council. We have met several times with some of the council members, Mr. Williams and Ms. Austin Lane, and everybody is familiar with the project at various stages. Let me just very quickly introduce the team. We, I represent one of the ownership entities, that's Infrastructure Capital Group and to my left is Bruce Levin who represents the other ownership, Keystar. Together we have purchased the project back in June of 2005. We, and we came into the process looking at this as an opportunity to actually create a stellar product here in Tacoma Park, one which could serve as a cornerstone of all of the development that's going into Tacoma, but one which is also going to be very respectful of not only the nature of Tacoma Park, but the character, the history and all of the elements of the neighborhood. To that end, we have had numerous meetings to educate ourselves of the neighborhood rather than coming in cold and proposing several ideas and we feel that we have brought on board several team members as architects sitting at the table, Cunningham Quill, and this is Mr. Lee Quill and also David Banioli, two of the main architects working on our project. They have a very long history dealing with active neighborhoods and very sensitive neighborhood projects and transit oriented development and infill projects like ours and they also have a lot of background in historic preservation, very much like our joint ownership. Also to my right, we have our council, Steve Kaufman, who is from Lindosson Blocker, pardon me, Lindosson Blocker, and he has tremendous background here in Montgomery County and in overall Maryland advising us on all of the zoning aspects and the processes. I'm not going to take too much time, I'm going to pass it on directly to our architect who's going to take you through the process. We'd like to bring you up to speed very quickly with limited history of how we got to where we are and then we'll show you what we're actually thinking of doing with the site itself, so, thank you.
Give him your name.
Oh, my apologies, yes. My name is Theanos Christofidis.
Madam Mayor, Mayor's Council, my name is Lee Quill, it's a pleasure to be before you. We're going to ask that we turn down the lights on your dais. We understand, we know where the light switches are, so if you will just stay where you are, we'll do an adjustment. We brought the screen in so you all could be comfortable in your chairs instead of moving back and forth to look at the screen. We're going to run you quickly through the process and what we've been working on since last June. We started with conversations early on with Historic Tacoma and a few of the neighbors back in June of last year and got heavily into the community process in September. But this project, as you know, is located in your downtown on Carroll Street, or Carroll Avenue, rather, and we're going to take you through it. Go ahead, David. Quick background, our team, the Cunningham Quill team and our developer client, we just want to show that we're used to working in historic context a lot. It's an important part of both organizations and groups' work and we've won a number of awards, we've got a few of ours and some of theirs up here, just to talk to it. This is why we're very excited about coming to Tacoma Park and having an opportunity to work here. As I said, we started back in June with some initial informal meetings, gaining information on history with Historic Tacoma and speaking to some of the neighbors and then worked our way through to tonight with March 6th, which has been a total of six formal and some informal meetings. And these images right here just represent some of the information that's going along from meetings with Historic Tacoma, Wacko and Victory Towers down to a site tour that occurred about a week and a half ago. The site is located within a five-minute walk of Metro. While we're not in this area, right adjacent to Metro, you are busy down there, I know. We are located in this particular area here at Laurel and Carroll, coming together on a very challenged site, but within a five-minute walk. Our firm does a lot of transit oriented development work and this is a very good site for direct visual link as to Metro. Next. As you know, one of the most important things about this site is where it's located in Historic Tacoma Park. I live in the city of Alexandria, so history is pretty steep there. Our offices are in Georgetown and we're in an old canal warehouse, so the very first thing we always do when we go and work in a project in a particular area is go back and do extensive historic research. Historic Tacoma helped us a great deal in getting off the kickoff on that, starting with understanding the place that we are going, that Benjamin Gilbert started. Believe it or not, as you know, our site is rather important being on access where the original log cabin was with the viewing tower, we're right adjacent to that, to as it's grown to the original garage in Tacoma Ford area prior to 41 and finally when Tacoma Motor renovated or made improvements in 1941 to the facade you know today. Now, the difference is the lettering has changed, but the storefronts and the entrance conditions, this being a service bay as opposed to the entrance to retail today, but pretty good shape. Next. Today, this is what it looks like within the assemblage of buildings. I do want to point out that Cunningham Quill Architects is celebrating this Saturday our 10th anniversary and we started the firm right here. I came from Skidmorelands in Maryland, Pennsylvania Avenue to Carroll and Laurel, sitting above the bank 10 years ago on March 11th. So when we first looked at the site, we knew it and it was great to come back home. One thing it is important to know about our site, however, is while you know about the parking lot for Mr. Ursiello's parking lot and grade here, the site we're dealing with is the one that drops down behind adjacent to the neighborhood. The other component is this two-story piece right here is not a full two-story piece. If you get up behind this, it is a portion that has an L-shaped configuration here and then wraps around very thin and this is the egress off of that, so we'll talk about that more. Next. Another important component of our research in the neighborhood is going out and understanding the topography, the neighborhood, the buildings, which we'll talk more about later. Next. The design has evolved over a period of time from the early September to where we are today. This slide, in order to keep it condensed, we have other images we could show you if need be, but we started off with a series of bars and H building which had 110 units. We then moved to looking at how to break down the scale and the mass of the building after some initial meetings, which then reduced it from 110 to 86 and as you can see, started to break up the mass because of its location. Second revision started to manipulate it even further with the sculpting of this area and this particular area and working with these what we call muse units, which are of a scale and proportion of single-family houses. And finally to where we are today, to taking another full floor off from the fourth floor that we had above here to reducing it by one floor, further sculpting and down to 71 units. Next. We work in model a lot when we've been working with the community. It's been very important, as you see in the model right down here, the small one, to work in various typologies. Models that you saw before were always inserted into that base model and what that allowed for was for us to do in the design process, but also for the community to actually see in a context how a design is shaped and how it's formed and how it starts to affect where they live. Next. This is our layout and how it starts to come together. There are three major components, or actually four, but three major blocks. The front section, which is the historic component, the old retail and keeping of the existing historic fabric and how we work with that. The second part is this part here, which deals with the basis building in this area right here, which deals with the flats and the live-work units, which I'll get to in a second. And the last point is this part of the site, which is a different condition, which because these are the rear yards, as you know, of the houses along West Moreland. So basically three different responses, one being historic context, one being a multifamily series of units and live-work units facing on the park and then the other one, a tail section that comes in off of West Moreland, but has a much different context relating to the community of neighbors and backyards and also working as a screen. Here's the parking lot up above where all the cars still will be parking and working as a new screen. Instead of having runoff going down through the yards and looking at headlights etc. going out, these units will actually work as a screen. So here's our historic component in this diagram. Here is the mid portion, the live-work units, which we'll talk about, along West Moreland and then the muse units. I'm going to take you through a few quick illustrations of the plans because there's a 35-degree drop from, 35 feet, sorry, 35-foot drop from Carroll Avenue down along the face of the site from up here down to here, on West Moreland. So the first component is the entry area and the retail area right here, the entrance to the residential multifamily building, the flats right here with retail. You're looking down on top of the muse from behind. If you were to go up, these would be the floor plans up above and there's again, this is above this retail, the retail commercial in this area and the flats and then the flats here and finally to the penthouse area. Next. When you're going down, you will pick up as you're coming down West Moreland, there'll be stepping down of a series of live-work units in this location and as you drop down a little bit further, again, live-work units, these are stepping down as you go here. What happens at this particular point, as I said, the muse is back over here, garage entrance occurs right here, right in this area on this level, so you will go up to some parking, as you can see right here behind these live-work units and you will go down to some parking down below all of this right here. So essentially what's happening is all the parking that's on-site right now and for this particular project will be underground and you'll see how the entrance comes in at this point right here on West Moreland. Next. There's been a lot of discussion about how we have molded and worked with the site, again, being a very three-dimensional project, reason for working with not only these diagrams, which everybody has seen as we've gone along, but also the models, a couple of things here. Number one, let's talk about the muse and how they work. Currently, that parking lot where everything is parked on next to the houses as they go down is at this elevation right here. We are dropping that down the approximate 10-foot dimension so that as the grade is coming up from the adjacent yard, that is the grade of our muse. What that does is it lowers the complete level of activity in that area, instead of being up another 10 feet, brings it down to the level of the adjacent yard. So here you can see where originally it was up here, it's down at this particular point. It then, in this particular area, the section through here, starts to step back in this particular area from West Moreland. One thing to keep in mind as you go through these sections is this is the existing warehouse currently right now. Far as the height, this is an outline of the existing house and this is the existing retail, which goes up and then steps back. Going behind. Next. The section B at this particular place is at this section right here at the edge of the muse next to where the entrance comes in and shows that this is the area where the end of the bar comes together, which we'll show you. This is the live-work unit, parking garage, the flats and a diagonal view of the flats right along here. And at this section, we're stepping back, this is a terrace right here and another terrace you'll see in the model, of stepping back from West Moreland to the flats right here. Next. We went out and took site photos, but we also have been working with a group called Interface to actually do two things. We work in this type of three-dimensional model, which is very helpful for you to come out and walk and take a look at it and we use it as a design tool. But another design tool we use is the three-dimensional imaging, so you can take a series of images and lay them into blocking and massing images into the existing context. So here you see existing retail buildings along Carroll Avenue right here and this is our back area in West Moreland going down here and as we layer in the new building as it comes in here, here are the live-work units as they're starting, they actually step up into here a little bit more, but basically in this area, this is the multifamily component and this is the penthouse beyond, so it's basically pulling in this particular area like this. Another view taken up the street, which is another important, but working with Wacko and the many meetings we've worked with them. Currently, the existing house and the existing warehouse building and the frontage, you know, of the CMU wall to that little terrace area right here in the sidewalk and as this comes in, you'll see how we started to step things back. It does change proportions slightly, as you can see, but here are a series of muse units, these are the little single-family scale dwellings that sit on the platform that goes in here. These are stepped-up live-work units and this is then further back behind, as you'll see in the model, where our flats take off and then the flats beyond there. Next. Okay, here is a view of a number of the locations we've been working with in the view from Carroll continuing of where, if this is before kind of condition, here it is if it was pulled way up to the front and then where we are today. Last one is the view from the rear yards. Currently, you can see the parking lot and the areas here and this is the building, Mr. Ursiello's building up beyond and then here is our building filling in right here with the muse units, the flats and then the other portion of the flats. Again, when you're looking at a black and/or color rendering of an infill, it's a little difficult to give any of the three-dimensionality to it. You know, we've tried two of the different colors, you can see the different components. That's why we work with this right here. Next. Community context. One of the most important things in working in this community, when we go in and work in this historic district or a community, is to really understand what is the fabric of a particular place. The reason that people come to Tacoma Park is not just because of the trees and the beautiful houses, but it's actually the architecture and the community that really draws one to the community. We've gone out and really studied Tacoma Park to a high degree, understanding the architectural components, which then helped to inform this project. Next. Things, and I'm going to run through the elements, we can come back to these, but the deep eaves, these are architectural defining elements such as deep eaves with the treatment of the structural components here. Next. The idea of brackets, whether they're this type or this type or the deep ones you saw before, whether it's the next one going to a mass and scale, many of the cubic-style houses with additive elements, being roofs in this area or here. Next. The idea of porches and balconies, whether you scoop out for a porch or whether it's an additive element, scoop out, additive, an additive here. The idea of how columns are handled, going again quickly, but columns can be handled such as this, they can be handled such as this, they can handle like this, a double column here, or many other ways, but the idea of richness of detail is very, very important. Next. Vertical bays, also looking how, dealing with bays can be added to structures to accentuate height, but also to start to frame space. Next. And slope sites. This particular area, a lot of slope sites in this particular area, but how one starts to step up and work away with the gardens or whether it's a step on the side or whether it is just a stair that goes up and into a condition along a diagonal. All, we've looked at all these different conditions because we have all of these in our particular project. Next. The last thing comes to is color and material. A lot of times- A lot of times, when you're going around, you will see a banding of not only different textures, whether this is a shingle-type of treatment right here, and then a condition such as the stucco, and then down here, rusticated cinder block or stone base. The idea of banding of color to add richness and texture, as well as the material, is a big component of the homes here in Tacoma Park, and we'll be, and we're working with that on the design of the project. Finally, this one is an interesting one to see how adaptations work. This is the building, all three of these are the same basic structure of the square with the window pattern, but here you see the additive elements which add to the richness of texture, which is what I've been talking about. Here you have the porch, you have the clear-story lights, you have the brackets and the original roof as intended. On this one, you've stripped away the porch and some of the detail has changed around here, but the brackets are still here, the roof is still here, but by taking away the porch, you've really changed quite a bit of how the character of this house reads. You've got these little lights up here. Finally, when you strip away and change the roof, you take away the brackets, you take away the porch, even take away the clear-story lights above the door, you can see how the richness of this structure, while it's a fine structure, does not have the same richness as the original building. So therefore, what we're trying to do is not go from a condition which is just a few elements of a roof and some windows, but going back to the richness of what Tacoma Park is about, next, design elevation. Quickly, we're taking you through some studies just to show you, we work in sketch, we work in diagram sketch, we work in regular sketch, we put it in the computer to test ideas and patterns along, we like the live-work units along here, and this, that's a find, in this area right here. The next one, again, looking at the end, can there be ideas of bays, which we have looked at, we've got some studies over here that have looked at that. And again, working back and forth between sketch and the program and also in the model. Three-dimensionally, we work in models a lot, so once we got the massing to a point where we had lowered it, taken the fourth floor off and lowered it down, we then wanted to jump in scale to this model, which you're seeing being constructed, which is the one right in front of you here. In this one, we're starting to bring, instead of just amassing, we're starting to bring life to the project in the sense of talking about the bays of the live-work units, which provide an opportunity for a rhythm to start stepping down Westmoreland Street as it's going back down to the neighborhood to start to reflect the bays and porches in a rhythm pattern of Westmoreland. The muse units, while we show them as little blocks here, the idea is to articulate these in either two or so designs, so that you have a differentiation of these units as they go along, some dealing with more glass areas, sometimes dealing with the porch and the scoop out. The idea of how columns are handled to work with the roof and how one starts to scoop out, as I said, a porch here, the idea of bays, we were originally, at this particular height, came all the way over to this particular point, we've actually not only taken the floor off up here, but then sculpted it out here to bring this down in a step-down condition. And then the top of buildings, we think it's important not to just put a concrete block or brick bland penthouse on top of a building, we think it's important to allow the skyline of buildings and the tops of buildings to add richness to a city also. And as you look in the next slide and start to look at some of these images, the idea of actually making this something that is rich in material with glass and an element of the building that adds back to the skyline, because you will be seeing this from a distance as you're driving down Carroll, is very important. So not get rid, don't make it just a utilitarian structure, but actually part of the top of the building and the architecture, next. As we step down, the idea of the overhangs, the articulation of the treatment of the structure, if you've seen the step down from the portion of the building, which is the actual flats, down to the live-work, or excuse me, the live-work units are here, and to the muse units with the different terraces, it steps up and down into the houses, this one is cut in half because of the edge of the model, but as you're stepping down, going down a block, again, this continues to drop down, so you've got a sloped condition here. I'm sorry? Thank you. Dave was just mentioning, this is our parking entrance, which I had shown you earlier. So the edge of our site runs right along here, is the parking entrance right here, and then the live-work units. Again, parking in this area, step up and the ramp up will be as a stair, and the articulation, like you saw on that corner house condition where we've got that. This muse condition is going to be the top of the garage, it will be a concrete deck, which then has soil put back on top of it and grass. So in many cases, you've probably seen this, if you're familiar with the Sackler Museum down at the Smithsonian, when you walk off of Independence Avenue into that big landscaped courtyard, that is actually over the museum, it has trees, it has grass, same condition, that's on a concrete deck. We will probably have, we'll see if we can get some trees, I'm not sure we can in this particular area, but the idea of screening that into a green lawn and a green roof is what we're planning there. And then the step-up condition right up here, we, this is the lower flat, and then the two-story unit here will also be the same condition, a green roof, next. So here we are with the view coming in from the park and looking off of Carroll as the building steps down with the live-work units, the terrace, the step-back and other terrace, the main bulk of the flats, the historic component here in the front, pulling the front of the building back to allow for the retail to read, there's a proportion, as you can see, that allows for that retail component to read across the front with the rest of the buildings, and then the step down here in the back down to here. That brings us to our community dialogue. We're ready to turn it back to you now and be open for questions. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for that presentation. Are there members of the council who have questions? Joy?
I had one, just on that last slide, I think it takes me a little by surprise how close the muse are to the existing house, the first house on Westmoreland. Yeah, no, yeah. That one and the next one. When we discussed this project before, it seemed to me that the muse were the way of having some stepping down, but even if you've brought the parking lot level down, you've put something on it with height that isn't there now, are you complying with all setback requirements, what you're doing there?
Yes, we are. Currently, the house on the other property line is about eight feet from its own property line, and we are then fifteen feet back from that. So what's interesting is you go back through, and I can let Dave talk about this a little if you want, but the houses are rather close as they step down through Westmoreland, we wanted to make sure. I mean, we've got, it is, it is wider than is what there, isn't there between houses right now. However, it's still, you know, it's not a wide gap between them, it's got eight feet and then fifteen feet back, so.
The, we're in a commercial C1 zone, the setback from a C1 zone to residential zone is eight feet, and we're actually almost double that.
Yes, sir.
Who's, who said his hand up?
I had one more question, is this related to the same one?
That's fine, go ahead.
I guess my concern is similar. I mean, yes, your setback is eight feet, but it's out of character in a lot of ways with setbacks on the street. The setback in most of those houses from the street is about fifty feet. And so what you've got essentially is, if I look at the views, is the muse fighting the street. When there's a street here, it's that that's fifty foot, you know, setback the width of the street plus a fifty-foot setback in the houses, you've got the houses, and if there's only one house, then you can say, well, it's eight feet, it's sixteen feet, it's that eight feet, but instead it's a wall of houses coming across the backyards. And just conceptually, that feels a lot different than being across the street. If there were twenty-five feet and a setback, that would be a lot different than this. That seems kind of imposing.
Well, let me, let me address a couple of things, just that I can talk to that. The dimension from the edge of this house, the eight feet is the existing property line, from the face of this to their property line, and then we were fifteen beyond that, so just to make sure that you're clear on that. The reason for stretching these across here was, as one comes back in, right now, they have, we've been meeting with the community since September, and a lot of things have come out, so there's a lot of juggling of issues that we've been trying to address. One is, there's been a lot of runoff that comes off of this parking lot down to this one, and then goes down into the backyard of all these units. So the idea of putting a green plinth and putting houses on it in general occurrence has been very supported for a couple of reasons. One is we're getting rid of them staring at cars in this particular area. Secondly, is we're creating an area where we catch this runoff and control it here and actually do a green lawn, a grass just like this. And secondly, the idea of, instead of doing a more masterpiece, we can show you from some of the models, maybe seraphs, you could get some of the other model pieces that fit in here. Originally, we had looked at how you might handle the tail in a more solid piece, pull back, and the discussion was to break it into a series of elements that are same scale and proportion of some of the houses here and in other parts of Tacoma. The edge of this, the reason we brought this out at this particular case, and this is an edge, this kind of complete actually to block, if you look, I guess it's best in this image right here, this is your end of your commercial zoning right here, and essentially what it does is start to encapsulate and close off the parking area right here and put a residential face on this commercial component, so that instead of having just the pieces of cars and grills, the residential units go across. The reason for bringing it out to the street right here was so that as you're looking up the street coming back from here, because these vary from the setback here to some a little bit here and back and forth, was to have a residential scale element within that to complete the block before you step up as you're going up, because I said as it's going, it's a thirty-five-foot drop, it's a big drop through here. So instead of being right up against this, the idea of stepping down in a residential scale thirty by thirty approximately, by thirty-foot-high element is why that was intentionally put there. And we've talked with the community about this, and while there's been discern about, you know, not going with a block like this, the general consensus has been the idea of going with residential units, scaled units, which start to pick up detail in the houses, has been, you know, generally received pretty well. I'll let them speak for themselves.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from them. I'm just concerned about the closeness.
Joy, do you have another question?
Yes, next. My second question was just about the front elevation on Carroll. Can you say something about the historic requirements for leaving that intact, or could there be some, I know that there is going to be some impact with what you're proposing here, so you'll see that from Carroll, isn't that right? You'll see the height of the building coming up behind?
No, actually, that's exactly why we took the photographs of one of the views where we took the photograph from across the church. If you're actually standing either directly in front of the building, if I may just stand up for a moment, I'll try and illustrate it.
Isn't that the building?
Yes, this is exactly the building right here. Okay, so basically, these photographs are all taken from standing across the street at the church. If you're standing either right in front of the building here, or if you're standing on the other side of the street, you cannot see these elements right above it.
But you can see them from where you took the picture, and so
That's right.
Are you trying to concentrate the impact where the Victory Tower currently is?
No, that was not our intent. This was actually a study to understand what sort of a setback would we need from the face of this wall, so we are not being obtrusive and we're not impacting the historic element of the facade.
Like the one
Right, like the one, like the one in this one over here. So we kept on, what we were doing is we were trying to study how far back from the face here do we need to be in order to bring this building, so it's not obtrusive to the historic elements. And by taking this over here, as you see, we bring it up to about, I think it's almost ten feet off the front, that is going to impact your side of vision, whereas here, we're far, far more set back, and that, there is no impact whatsoever in terms of line of sight, in terms of what you're actually going to be able to see, and this is according to what the code would actually require us in terms of, you know, line of sight and visibility and all of this stuff. In terms of the preservation, we will be preserving the entirety of the facade and restoring it, and we've also made a statement to Historic Tacoma that we are going to be looking at the volumetric restoration of historic elements within the structure itself. And by volumetric, I mean, I don't know the exact depth of how far back the historic elements actually go right now, I don't know if you noticed, but we have one tenant right here called Rerun, and then there's another tenant, well, ex-tenant right here, the restaurant, and don't really know how deep the historic elements. Once you walk into the building, there have been additions upon additions upon additions of the actual structure. So this setback here is, I don't know, it's to the tune of about the twenty-five, thirty feet off the face, that sort of range. And again, we took our guidance from two statements that were made, both at the HPC level as well as Historic Tacoma, and that was observe the existing elements and the existing historic nature of the entire street. And the existing historic nature of the street, when you look at it, is the intent was for the front elements, the historic elements, to read as two-story units. Well, there's a banding right here, which are basically the two-story historic units right across like that. So what we've done is we've said, okay, we will maintain that banding, and we will bring the face of the building up to it. We are not going to encroach beyond this two-floor historic element, historic reading of the entire retail shopping center.
Okay. Bruce?
Yeah, if I can just cover a couple of areas. One, if you can just comment real quickly on any efforts you're making toward LEED certification or any of that area.
We have about, I think, four, we have a couple in, going through the exam right now, we have four LEED-certified architects in our office. And what we try to do is look at each individual project to see what we can do to bring LEED certification or LEED elements to each project. At a minimum, elements such as the green roof and other technologies, which can be brought to elements like this, will be looked at in all projects that we're involved in and many of our clients. I'll let Stilianus go further about what the clients' hours are, but we have the house in-house training, and there's more we're bringing to it, and I know he's dying to speak, so I'll let him speak too.
We have actually taken the steps of registering the project into the LEEDs registry, and for its, I don't know if it's public knowledge as to what name we've registered under, but if anybody would like to actually go and take a look at the registry, it's ICG Tacoma Associates, which is the ownership entity of the project. We, at the same time, have brought on board a consultant who are LEED consultants in order to address the certification process, and we have set up appointments within the next week or two weeks with them, where they are going to take the project, break it down, guide us through the process, educate the entire team, and also identify benefits, pros and cons, the objectives for LEED certification, and they, we have requested from them as well to actually give us proposals, not only for the engineering elements, but also any other type of third-party consultation or third-party assistance that we might need who are of LEED background or LEED certification. Unfortunately, I cannot tell you the exact stage of it, other than to say we are investigating it right now, and other than having registered the project, that was the first step towards that entire process.
And I guess, if you could just, I use the acronym and you're using the acronym, but if you can explain what it is, it's something, something environmental design, but I don't remember what all of these
Leadership and natural and environmental design, and it's governed by the U.S. Green Building Council, actually based in Washington. But to put up, make it, to answer your question, very succinct, we're looking at it, we don't know if we're going to commit to doing it, we're going to have as green a building as we possibly can, both for practical reasons and because we do know it's a sensitive issue in the, in the community, and we think people don't want to live here, these are reasons they want to live here. Whether we'll actually get LEED certification, which adds a very, in itself, just the certification component, as I've said at a number of meetings, it adds a very substantial cost, so we're trying to assess the cost of getting the certification, and most of the jurisdictions in the area don't require LEED certification, even to be designated as a green building. So, for example, Maryland has a energy tax credit program, which is not, there's no funding left in it now, but they don't, they require LEED compliance but not certification. So we're trying to get educated on it, there are very few buildings that have been built in Maryland to LEED, to LEED certification.
Sorry, Mr. Williams, if I may just expand on that, what we have also learned recently is that LEEDs was actually set up originally for commercial buildings, so there's been a tremendous struggle, not only to certify mixed-use buildings, but also to understand how it would impact mixed-use buildings. And there are very few of these projects actually out there and people willing to take the chance with that. And that has been part of the difficulty, because if you want to go to the websites and say, okay, and say, okay, I'm building a commercial building, how do I make it LEEDs? It's all right there. When you talk about a residential building, everyone sort of scratches their head and says, well, let's, let's think about it and let's look at the various components.
Okay. And if I just can cover a couple other areas pretty quickly, and maybe I'll just let you know what those are, and then you can go through them. One is, I think there's still concern, as was expressed by some of my colleagues, about the massing, particularly at the corner, at the, what I'll call the back corner, where the, over the parking garage there, yes, that. And I would say that I understand, and I think a lot of the neighbors understand, the step-down effect of the news units. I think there's still some concern that, that that front news unit kind of brings things out to the, to the street and still keeps it fair, fairly close to the street, and you get that sense of the height there, and you, and even with the, with the penthouse on top and the, the corner of the next floor down pulled back in, I think there's still a sense that anything, anything to make that corner where it gets so close to the street less, less tall, less massive, I think there's been some concern about maybe trying to face the, more of that front news unit facing the street rather than the side, or maybe even facing kind of both ways so that it reads more toward the street. And anything to pull both that front news unit and the front corner, the next corner of the taller part of the building, down to just maybe even take that stepping effect down one more level. I've also heard a number of concerns from the neighborhood, and I'll just play devil's advocate for them here for a second, with apologies to Historic Tacoma and the HPC, that a number of people are struggling to understand why the, the reading of the historic facades along Carroll Avenue in the commercial district kind of take precedence over the reading of the historic district coming down Westmoreland and essentially push the volume back toward the residential and away from the commercial. I would say there's some struggle to understand that. And then finally, on the parking, I know that there have been some questions. I know that, I think you're currently at 124 parking spaces with the residential, 71 units at one-to-one, which leaves 53 for the commercial. People were wondering how many parking spaces there are now on site for more, more commercial than you would be providing as currently configured in your project, and how that parking relates to the commercial. And then just finally, if you want to say anything about any attempts to link your parking to the other adjacent potential parking project on Mr. Ursiolo's property, which, which the council is somewhat familiar with.
I'll go in reverse order.
Sure.
If that's okay. As I've mentioned in a number of meetings, we have, and Mr. Ursiolo has responded to in public, we've tried to create a type of joint development arrangement, purchase his property, and he's said explicitly that he doesn't want to participate or sell or develop that property at this time after many, many, many proposals on my part of doing anything within those things.
And if I could just jump in there for a second and say that I think one of the, one of the continuing concerns on the part of the neighborhood, and I think the council is again familiar with this, is the difficulties of traffic coming out from Westmoreland onto Carroll Avenue, and we've had various issues with state highway and with particularly the residents of Tacoma Tower, Victory Tower, having difficulty getting across there, trying to get some kind of solution to that intersection. I don't think anybody has come up with the, with the magic idea yet that's going to make it work. I'm not sure there is a magic idea, but I think one of the, one of the big stumbling blocks to everybody's feeling, the comfort level with this project, is dealing with how the traffic will get out from there onto Carroll Avenue. I just, I wanted to make sure that point was clear.
This is one of those issues that has, there are a lot of neighborhood dynamics, like everyone knows that the immediate neighborhood does not want the traffic in the neighborhood where it is the natural flow certainly for some of the traffic in and out of the building would be, as it currently is, to go through the neighborhood. And we've tried to respond to this as best we can by saying, for example, we would agree with any type of MDOT recommendations or traffic study recommendations to, or unilaterally to direct traffic to Carroll Avenue, which exacerbates the existing problem at the intersection. And I think as part of a, a traffic study, and so your second question, your third question are somewhat related in that, I'm just going to answer, I'm going to kind of go between them for a second. There are currently approximately 55 spaces for 22,000 square feet at the location of commercial space, office and retail. We'll have 53 spaces for really 9,000 square feet of traditional, commercial, office and retail. And the residential, and that parking will also be utilized by approximately 11,000 square feet of live-work, the commercial component, of live-work units along Westmoreland. So on the one hand, we'll have a less intense use of the site than is currently, it's currently utilized, which should generate less commercial traffic, because the, part of the objective in the planning process with communicating with the, with WACCO was that the neighborhood, nor did we envision having really that intense of a commercial use on Westmoreland, although it does have a fairly intense use now, and we thought that live-work would be a good transitional use that would provide modest level of activity, a 24-hour residential component, enhanced security and walkability in that area. So I think that's positive. On the other hand, certainly, we're going to have 71 families or residents living there, and there will be, you know, somewhat, some additions to peak traffic, although it is a metro location. And our experience is that people are going to buy here because they want to have metro access, and that they are not going to be wed to their cars hopefully all the time. I think all the things you mentioned, plus making available spaces, for example, for zipcars and flexcars in the Old Town area, which I've talked with OTBA with some degree as well, all work to minimize the generation of traffic, but certainly, there will be an impact. But I don't, you know, we can't necessarily, the solutions are sort of mutually exclusive. We don't, if we limit the traffic in the neighborhood down Westmoreland, then we're going to have more traffic at that intersection. I think there have been some proposed improvements to that intersection, which we are looking at the study, and in conjunction with doing our own study, we were going to look at further so we could quantify what exactly, try to quantify what's going on at that intersection. I think I've addressed the parking, and I think you gentlemen want to talk about the...
Sir, I also have to do another...
No, that's right.
Before you get off the issue of the traffic, I'd just like to add something. I only had the benefit of one presentation, I sat in on your presentation that you made to WACCO and the Victory Towers folks, and my first initial reaction to that was, how can you put that much additional traffic onto what we've already identified as one of the worst intersections in this part of the city? I think that's going to be a very significant problem if you're expecting to move at night. I, myself, you know, go back and forth from there, I'm not within walking distance of Old Town, and so if I go to Old Town, I often drive, and I can tell you, the worst traffic is sometimes on the weekends. And I think people are going to be getting out and using their cars on weekends. And so I am really concerned, very concerned about the impact of that traffic, both in terms of traffic per se, but particularly in terms of that intersection. It is almost a blind intersection. I come in and out of there on a fairly frequent basis, and it is very, very difficult to get out of there. It's very hazardous coming in because you know when you're going down there that the people who are coming out really can't see, and so they're going blind and you're hoping that they don't try and hit you. So I think that saying, well, you've attempted to work something out in Mr. Ursiolo and it doesn't work, isn't going to do it. I mean, I think there's got to be some efforts to channel some of that traffic elsewhere. Otherwise, it's going to be a very dangerous situation and something that would cause us great concern.
I guess I'll echo the other concerns that have been raised. It seems to me that 71 units generates the traffic of about three blocks of residential homes there. And people are already close to the metro, and we've got a traffic problem, so why would we assume that if you lived here, they wouldn't be driving cars when people already live there, drive cars and have created the traffic problem? I don't think that's true. I mean, I think that you're going to wind up with a significant traffic problem in three blocks of residences jammed into a half-block of living, and trying to get in and out of that, I think is going to be extremely difficult. The other concern I'll raise, and we can't answer it here tonight, and I'm not going to answer it because you're biased, and I need a more objective opinion, which is, what is the significance of the loss of retail in Old Town versus, versus the housing development? I mean, one thing we need to know is whether the loss of, it sounds like 13,000 square feet of retail, what is, what's the impact of that for the other businesses in Old Town, and how does that serve our long-term goals of small business viability there? I mean, I know the initial comments I've gotten from people is that unless you're talking about a lot of housing, and this doesn't qualify as a lot of housing, that you want more retail on the block to activate people. And so, I mean, I've asked the council before, and I've told Sarah that I've talked with somebody who's willing to offer some professional advice on, on what these impacts would be. I think the council needs to get a sense of whether retail is the best solution, or whether the loss of retail is going to, is going to cause us more problems for our revitalization, or whether this is a reasonable trade-off. I don't know the answer to that, but I certainly want to get the advice on that before I say this is a good idea or not a good idea. The other question I was going to ask is, what is the buy-right density?
Much higher.
Buy-right?
Much higher, yes.
With no setbacks, and you can go as high as you want?
No, 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 we can go as high as we want, but this is a revital, designated revitalization.
Sir, the 110 scheme that we introduced there at the beginning was all within buy-right, under the height limits as well as within the zone.
And you need no, no changes, no, no special exceptions?
There's a permission by right.
Commercial overlay revitalization zone.
But don't you need to get additional, you don't you get, need to get the okay by the local government to go above, what's it, 30, 35 feet?
The reference I'm making is the Tacoma Park Master Plan that was created in 2000, and I don't recall the details of what you're asking, so I'm not sure of that.
Because when you say commercial overlays, what, what you're doing is not commercial at all. I mean, essentially, the point of commercial...
Commercial revitalization.
Right. Well, we were looking for commercial revitalization, this is a housing project, this isn't commercial revitalization.
The height, the special exception actually only allows 50 feet in the case of residential. If you were to propose commercial, the height is actually restricted less than 50 to 42 feet within that commercial overlay zone.
But again, you need a special exception.
Correct.
Okay. So that's not by right, that's by special exception.
I'll just comment on one thing on the commercial. Most of our tenants, and I, you can, you know them, I think will tell you, they've been struggling in this location at the lowest rents possible in this market. And particularly, if you, you know, where we're proposing to change the complexion of our retail/commercial components on Westmoreland Avenue, which bringing storefront-scale retail to that side of the street, to me, doesn't fit in with anything that's been described tonight or anything that's been expressed by the neighborhood or anyone else we've met with.
Wouldn't you be shrinking Talianos with the cycle Talianos was, had the cycle rerun is?
Well, we're going to be putting part of our, and we'll be shifting some of that space around because of entrances, and they'll be there, but we're not going to be eliminating any...
I didn't say eliminating, I said reducing.
Oh, I don't, I don't know any true with our net on the first floor. We're actually expanding our storefront, our commercial component on Carroll Avenue because right now, the top floor is only about 14 feet deep. So we're going to fill that in, not raise the height. We're going to expand that to cover the existing retail section. So we're going to have more of a, a commercial presence actually on Carroll Avenue where the retail's concentrated.
Second, for retail, doesn't work anywhere, I mean, those people that wouldn't...
I do know a lot of tenants in, other than here, and most of them, and, I'm not, this isn't self-serving, because we're actually, we wanted to do a more commercial project here because it had more of a long-term benefit to us, and we could not make it viable in this location with the park, first of all, the parking requirements, secondly, the rents are not here, and most of the tenants, as I said, a number of them are in existing space, and John's Shopping Center would comment on the, on the foot traffic that they get here. Our experiences in most commercial revitalization, commercial follows residential.
If I could address a couple of issues that you had, council member, one thing you'd asked about was to step back along Carroll Avenue. And from the historic components and the discussions, there's been a desire to pull the building back as far as we can to, as Stilianos had spoken to earlier, keep the integrity and feel of the lower retail structures along Carroll Avenue at that point continuous. Now, as you remember from our discussion, that front second-story piece is just about 12 to 15 feet deep. So what part of the discussion about the commercial slash retail is happening is that we're actually filling in that particular area of the building, in this area just right here, in the front, with additional commercial-sized retail space that could be used for either used back in that back up to the main block. There's always been a trade-off with how far you would want to push it back and push it forward, and how you step down at the back. And, and as in any kind of project, we work in revitalization areas a lot. In fact, we, a couple years ago, did the first building in Arlington's revitalization zone along Lee Highway in Cherrydale. And whenever you're dealing with a commercial strip along the edge of a neighborhood, a single-family neighborhood, those are the ones that are the most challenged, so there's always a trade-off. And I think you had asked here, you weren't sure what the reasonable trade-off was with regards to retail, which we'll need to give you, I think, some additional information for you to share with you on that, so we've made note of that. But what we find in the step-down is, in the historic resource, you don't want to encroach totally on that where you're slamming a building up on top of the historic resource. You want to respect that and pull it back enough so that the feel of Old Town Tacoma in this particular, and the retail strip will still read. You know, a revitalization project, whenever we go into revitalization zones, they normally are mixed use. You're bringing residential, commercial, retail, there's, there is a mix in these types of projects, so it's always a balancing act between how these all elements start to work together. Let me talk about units for a moment. You're saying it's three blocks worth of residential. The user pattern is different. I live in a single-family house in Alexandria in the Delray neighborhood. The user profile of our neighborhood, single-family, is a lot different than the user profile that will, the majority of the units go in here. It's not that families won't go in here, there will be a few families. However, the majority of the users that will go into, and this is just based on our history of projects, is when you're located within a five-minute walk of metro, the people that will buy in those projects, we find that about 50 to 70% of the people that buy in those projects buys in that area by choice, because when you're on the residential end, if you're working near metro, you can walk and then go to your office. If that was a commercial project, obviously, you're drawing from a much bigger area, and the rideshare for metro will go down to, you know, sometimes as low as 25 or 30%. Here, people make a conscious decision because they want a lifestyle of being able to leave their car or not have a car, and be able to walk and live in a community that is called a place, which is really what Tacoma Park is about. This is not, it's a suburban, you know, vinyl-sided project that's stuck out off of Route 66 somewhere in Virginia or 270. This is very much about coming to the city of Tacoma Park and wanting to live in a downtown area. So the user profile is very much about people that will either have no car or use it less. It's normally singles, young marrieds with maybe one kid or no kids, or empty nesters that'll come in. So the user profile for, for car usage goes down slightly, if not significantly, and the type of person that's going in here is not the same user profile where I'm running my kids all over the place to games and, you know, will have to use a car a little bit higher. So this one draws a little bit of distinction between a single-family, three rows of single-family user pattern basically, and what you'll find here, which may help you in that discussion.
Where do guests park? Do you have a one-to-one ratio?
Commercial component is available for guest parking.
That's right. Well, assuming that the commercial activities aren't going out of their spaces.
Well, we're going to have an excess amount of parking for the commercial, and it's anticipated it'll be used for guest parking. And people can put guests in their parking if they don't necessarily have a car, or they have in parking, or whatever it might be.
You're saying above the user profile?
I live in one-to-one parking, I think I have company over the parking on Westmoreland, which is not exactly the street now in front of us, it's a parking lot.
One of the things that we have not necessarily spoken to, really, I think we were quiet about in the presentation, are the mix of the units that we're anticipating for this. And that might actually alleviate some of the, the concerns that, that people have, including the community. The units that we're planning for here are basically studios, one-bedroom and two-bedrooms. So they're completely, they're not completely, but they're not necessarily identical to the single-family houses, and they're definitely not conducive to multiple-car ownership per unit. So the, the concept of one-to-one parking, unless you've got two young professionals... So the concept of one-to-one parking, unless you've got two young professionals that are basically sharing a unit, is very much in keeping with what we're actually talking about. Again, and as you said, in terms of the parking component, we are going to be overparked on the commercial spaces. And right now, we have, excuse me, we have, as Bruce mentioned, about fifty spaces. They're rarely ever all taken. We've been here on Saturdays, we've been here on weekdays, we've been here all sorts of hours. We have a property management company monitoring the situation. We have multiple empty spaces at any given time, which can actually respond to a couple of factors. One being the concern of the community that we're reducing retail, and this is really, we're taking away from the retail destination. The fact that there isn't enough parking being utilized might actually respond to, well, it's not a destination at this point in time, and that's why retail is suffering. And we have had numerous discussions with our tenants, some of whom have actually come up and said, "I'm struggling to make rent." And this is stuff that we actually bought in the project. This is not things that we negotiated with them in order to bring the tenants into the spaces. So we thought that the mix, pardon me, the response of the live-work units were, again, a good balance of being accommodating, or rather, being, meeting the letter of the law, which was commercial overlay, therefore, bring more commercial space, and change the mix of the uses type from strict retail to a more commercial opportunity, which would mean photography studios, or something like a legal practice, or an accounting practice, or something like that, which does require some storefront visibility, but can also use a much more efficient space rather than the deep spaces of a much bigger retail component. So, but clearly, we don't have the answer that I think you're looking for, but we have thought very hard and long about the impacts of these various components, so.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I thank all you gentlemen for coming this evening and sharing this information with us. I find it most helpful. And I also appreciate, you know, what the amount of outreach you've done with the community and your modifications, your plans along the way as you've, as you're responding to the community. Really appreciate that. First, I would like to say that I support Councilmember Elrich's suggestion that we, as a council, do some planning, as a city, do some planning for future economic development within our city, especially within the Old Town area. Something I've wanted to see for a long time, and I'm glad that he is suggesting that idea. I would also like to say that I fully support Councilmember Williams' concerns about the muse units, especially as they're out near the West Moreland Avenue. In looking at the size of the end unit to the adjacent home next door, it looks kind of imposing over top of that home. And I think that, you know, that buffer, that transition from the large building to the residential community is one of the most important aspects of this project. And it, glad to see you're struggling with that issue. I'm not sure that you've found the right solution yet. It still looks like those units are, as I say, kind of imposing on the, on the single-family homes next door. The parking garage, is there more than that one entrance and exit to the parking garage? Just the one? So all the traffic from this building would be using West Moreland Avenue?
Which is the current condition. We are increasing the amount of traffic in terms of fixed traffic to this destination because of the residential units, but we are mimicking or mirroring the existing condition, which is whoever's using the current retail parks in the back, which is right here from that one entrance and exit location. So we're not changing the existing condition in terms of how you gain entry and exit to our current parking.
Right, you're just changing the volume, which is...
That is correct, yes.
Which is, I think, the real concern. Yeah, I think that's, again, another issue that needs to be worked on. And I know that probably the best solution has to do with cooperation with the adjacent property owner, but I hope you're more successful in the future.
I wonder if I might ask a question about that, Councilman. I'm Steve Klosman, the air attorney. Has there been any consideration by either the county or the city to require the master right-of-way to come through to the other street? Any consideration of that since the individual owner doesn't seem willing to participate in that type of development?
Mayor Porter could come in. There have been some discussions with that property owner, not about that specific thing, though.
I mean, I think that that seems to be an issue. The question is, is either the, I don't know, I'm not quite sure whether you have that authority as a city, but I know the county does. And I've had several projects where we have worked with the county's Department of Transportation to have them initiate eminent domain, and the private sector developer has afforded the cost of that.
Yeah, I think Mr. Osceola has been a real contributor to our community, and so I don't, I wouldn't want to see something come down to that level of work, but I would hope that he is being open-minded with you and looking at any proposals that you offer and considering how it could benefit the community at large.
We've probably approached him half a dozen times, and he's finally publicly, at the last Old Town Business Association meeting, he was asked directly at that meeting by someone other than us, and he did state for the record that he's not selling for any price or in any conditions. I mean, we're being, I think, unfortunately, held hostage for some...
Yeah, and I certainly wouldn't encourage him to sell. I mean, it is his property and his right to...
He has other plans for that property.
He even discussed an easement through his garage. We've recently, for example, negotiated easements for adjacent properties in Bethesda where you'd have a public egress through, which my client would be very willing to do with him. But I mean, unless you have an access through that property, whether this project is ordered or not, you just don't have another exit for traffic on West Moreland. So any of those are possible. Thank you.
And I think Doug had a question?
Yes, if I may, gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight. I'd like to ask whether you are aware of some other developments of residential property that are taking place in the immediate area. Within five minutes' walk, for example, there's at least three projects that are known to us, and whether projects like this and like yours are developed in isolation, or whether it is possible, we have to take these things into account regardless of whether the developers do or not. And I suppose the concern is, is that within several years, there may be several thousand new residents in that immediate area adding to the traffic and congestion. And also, with respect to the retail, you know, maybe the current retail folks ought to hang on for a couple of more years until this new influx of residents arrives, or, as you suggested, because often the residential drives the retail, it may be that the composition of the retail in the future will change and grow, including that in Tacoma Park with this larger growth of population in the immediate area. So I wonder, you could just comment on the other developments in the areas you know them, and then the effect on retail?
Sure. I've been involved with the development on the DC side. And just as to scale, actually, I think there has been some quantifying of development potential by right in DC and on the, in the city of Tacoma Park. And I don't think it, I think it's more, the total development potential is around seven hundred total units to the entire area, running from Blair Road to Old Town. And that is, in fact, includes sites that might not otherwise be developed. But for example, there will be a project at the corner of Carroll and, or on the corner of Maple, and this kind of addresses both your comments. There will be, and there already is some ground, vacant, additional ground for vacant retail that's been introduced to the community in what I call higher-traffic locations, which has not been able to be rented so far, which is, you know, somewhat indicative of the current market conditions here. There just isn't enough traffic to support all the retail that currently exists, but there will be an additional, I believe, thirteen thousand square feet of retail at that location as well. And I do know that the, you probably know better than I, that there is some additional retail being proposed in a alternative planned configuration for the La Moda site at the metro station. And a number of the developments are, I think, far, I mean, I could go through many of them, but are not going to be in the near term. I think there probably will be in the next three or four years, including this project, if we're fortunate enough to go forward, about two-hundred-and-fifty condominiums to three-hundred, maybe townhouses and condominiums. Probably in the long, that higher number probably be in the five to seven, five to eight-year horizon. So just to address those things. And I'm not sure if I addressed all your comments.
I hope you all know how committed the council is to addressing the parking problem in Old Town. Unfortunately, we don't own property there. So as property owners do devise plans, we look to them to fully cooperate with us to meet that goal, which we've already invested a hundred thousand dollars in with both parking and traffic studies, as well as engineering studies. And both of those were really focused on the viability of a parking garage there on John Osceola's property. The city went further and obtained a loan, I believe, a no-interest loan from the state of three hundred thousand dollars, which we have not been able to use. And hopefully, this helps you understand that we have talked about this in depth and feel very strongly that the parking situation does need to be addressed in Old Town for all of our businesses' benefit and for the public's benefit. As you build an underground parking garage in what you propose here, have you thought about the way it could connect to the adjacent property owner in a way that would serve that parking need which the city has established?
Well, we have looked, done some preliminary, you know, investigation of it, but we really hadn't done any in-depth engineering analysis, as Mr. Osceola had initially encouraged us and provided us with conceptual plans of what he was, has been working on for a number of years there. And after great encouragement from certain council members, we pressed that further, and then Mr. Osceola, you know, said, "I'm not going to do anything." Just to try to answer the question without having done a study, there is theoretically a way to connect a, certainly connect, I mean, it's an adjacent property that goes out to Eastern Avenue, so we're not, you know, something is feasible. I don't, the biggest problem there is, what the problem is with all this area, there are huge elevation changes. So right now, if our site continues to descend, and if we were to try to introduce a ramp or some type of structure between our parking, which is being pushed down, is the problem because we're trying to lower our site, whereas he's talking about building an above-ground parking structure.
Well, no longer, unfortunately.
So he was talking about building some type of structure, which could be no parking or very nominal parking, and he could have surface, I mean, it's currently discussed having surface parking there and potentially doing another use altogether there. But without building a structure, it also, it greatly impinges on his ability to develop the property because he's at grade on Eastern Avenue, and if parking was to come out of the building, it's quite a narrow site. Where do you, what would you use that site for, other than a parking garage?
So can you tell me more about your exploration of this? What's clear to me, when I look at the back of that property, both yours and Mr. Osceola's, is that the grade could work to an advantage in that it wouldn't be so difficult to put underground parking there. You all are already proposing that, so clearly, you've found it to be an economically viable possibility, and I would like to further demonstrate how that could be economically viable for the adjacent property owner.
We, in terms of the preliminary studies, we have taken a look at the various elevations and the actual level change, and there is about a ten-foot change, unfortunately, between our site and Mr. Osceola's, and then it rises very steeply onto Eastern Avenue. The, what that would cause is a steeper ramp from our lower location out up into Eastern Avenue, in which case rendering that particular side of Eastern very unusable for anything else other than a ramp and some narrow homes or something like that, not necessarily going to a big structure coming out.
Can I just back up one second?
Sure.
That's assuming that his property stayed intact with all of the retaining walls and all of that?
No, 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 no. We're only dealing...
Actually, you can see his site on that model right there.
Yeah, we're only dealing, we're not dealing at all with this level here. We're only dealing with this land parcel right there. Am I understanding correctly? We're not touching this at all, correct?
Where he has a very large surface parking lot right now...
Right, this one.
...is bounded by the retaining wall.
Correct.
And won't your underground parking come?
No, not at all. It's going to be dramatically below that.
It's going to be even...
Right, that's the whole thing, we're trying to bring our site down, not maintain the current elevation. Right now, the neighbors of West Moreland face a large retaining wall, both on Mr. Osceola's property and then another one on our property.
Right.
So we're, again, to try to meet, you know, to deal with the scale as to rent the whole.
Okay, I understand, and I don't want to belabor this point, but my point is simply that we recognize the problem to the business community, and I like to hear my colleagues weigh in about how important Old Town is and how they would like to see some planning done. We've come a long way over the last four years, and the Business Association has paid very close attention to both parking and development, and I'm encouraged with the commitment from the council that as land and property lies fallow, that we will spur growth and do things to recruit people to our area because I think that's what's needed as well. One last question, well, two, actually. The restaurant use of, that Talleyano's has left behind, is that something that you have tried to market to a different restaurant? Where, what I hear from the business community, as well as from residents, is we don't want to lose restaurants, that's what we want to get more of. And so, since that has already been established as a viable commercial restaurant, isn't that something that it would make sense to maintain for possibly a future tenant?
Absolutely, and that's why we have not, we have not yet cut in stone the floor plans of that retail space in the front. Replacing it with another restaurant would be great for us as well. But let me just address as to why there's no longer a restaurant there. The particular tenant, or ex-tenant, I should say, was in the space as of last August without paying any rent. And one of the arguments was that he didn't have enough patronage to make rent. And at the same time, we negotiated with him favorably for him to lower his rent considerably to try and help him stay there. So again, this goes back to a lot of the discussions and comments we have heard, that it's a vibrant community and the retail space should be able to survive, and it's a destination retail, and we're having situations like that. And we were left without any option, obviously. I mean, having been in that space since last August without paying us any rent, and having had his lease expire, we were, our hands were tied. We were forced to ask him to leave.
But you are interested in getting another restaurant tenant?
We will be pursuing another restaurant tenant should we move forward with the actual development, absolutely. At this point in time, without knowing exactly when we're going to start the development itself, it would be very difficult to encourage any tenant to take that particular space.
We've had a number of inquiries, but we can't commit to any longer than, say, eight to sixteen months. We actually tried, I talked to someone about, that has an existing restaurant, about taking it over basically for free, so the space wouldn't be dark. it over basically for free, so the space wouldn't be dark, and so there could be activity there, because it's an existing restaurant, but no one's, because even for having no rent, it still has an investment for someone to move in that space. So, I believe the last thing we wanted is for it to be empty. It's not benefiting us in any way.
And during your construction, it would need to be empty?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. And is that one of the commercial spaces that would be extended back into the development you proposed? Would the Talleyano's, former Talleyano's space be enlarged?
No, no, it's-
Or is it just the upstairs?
The upstairs. The ground will be basically dimensionally similar.
Right.
Then the last question is about the adjoining property on the corner there of Westmoreland and Carroll.
Yes.
I know that that property dovetails very closely with what you're proposing doing here, but have you discussed with that owner how to accommodate-
We have a great relationship with Lorena, but, you know, her parking is in the back, and nothing can be done to her structure, so we don't know that there's anything that we can do to, other than from kind of have the best design possible. But if we were to physically try to combine, she's an architect, she was very open to any type of, you know, I mean, a local neighborhood resident. She, there was just really no way that she could retain her parking, her loading, her access, the building, and also she has a lot of light, a lot of glass on the back of her, all of her offices, including her below-grade space because of the elevation change. So, she didn't really, from our discussions, see that there was, and our elevations of our building would be different, the floor levels would be different, where there would be any, there wouldn't be any benefit for us, and it'd be detrimental for her, although she has inquired about making parking available for her in the building. And it'll be public parking, by the way, in the building. So, I just want to reiterate, we're going to have more parking for our commercial than we currently do, any way you want to measure it. We will be, have the same absolute number of spaces and a much better parking ratio for our tenants.
Well, I would appreciate if, as you bring more information to council members, that you make sure it's distributed to all of us. We're all very interested in this project and in the Old Town sustainability. And then, as we continue to wrestle with the parking issues for Old Town in general, if you can keep in communication with us and make sure that we have exhausted all possibilities before we call it quits.
If I could, just to close the presentation, the owners intend to now move forward and put together their, the rest of their development team, which means they'll bring on a civil engineer to work with the architects, and also to bring on a traffic consultant. And one of the things I would suggest is, we'll have this traffic consultant also take a look at the parking situation there, and also the possibility of how you might connect through the adjacent property. I think that at least an analysis would be helpful there. The other thing that we'll do, that is, our firm will take a look at the police powers involved. I don't know, for example, whether the city has authority, for example, to establish a parking district here, or even whether you've thought about it, or any of those types of things.
We have looked at similar kinds of things.
But I think the simplest thing with the adjacent owner, if the garage that he ultimately intends to build there could be coordinated from a topography and architectural point of view, the very simplest thing is to provide an easement where we could have a smooth lane between the two garages out to the adjacent street, or ultimately do that. And at the very least, this project might be, if it goes before, might be constructed in such a way that that could be connected in the future, if it can't be connected now.
And would it mean that there was a way for that property owner to have cars exit onto Westmoreland?
Right. Well, it, well, you would probably have potential of going either way, but I mean, that, I think, is something that would be controlled by how you restricted the flow of traffic. You could have it just go one way. The other thing that-
People would learn, once they exited onto Westmoreland, how difficult it is to get around that way.
I think controlling that aspect is easily done. It's the, the other thing that they'll look at is the actual intersection at Westmoreland and Carroll, which you've mentioned is difficult, and what might be done there. Given the current process and how long things take to file, we're probably looking at a sixty-day period, thirty, six to eight weeks before there would be a formal filing with Park and Planning in Montgomery County.
So, it's your intention to go forward at this point within six to eight weeks and file, is that what you're saying?
To get, to get a formal process started, certainly the dialogues that we've started, we continue with the community, also with this council and with the HPC, several stakeholders are interested. But I think we know enough about the project and have had enough input to understand what the issues are, see if we can address them, including the issues raised today, again, by the council, by members of your council.
I certainly appreciate your coming, and I just wanted to reiterate, of the folks that I have spoken to, there seems to be two sort of overarching concerns. One of them is the safety and the traffic issue, and that's not so much necessarily the volume of traffic during traditional rush hours as it is during other periods of time. Even if people rent these units with the intention of taking the metro to and from work, they would likely be out doing errands on weekends, and that is one of the times where you do have serious traffic problems in Old Town. So, I'm not sure that removing the peak traffic is necessarily going to solve the problem there. We, when Mr. Osceola had a plan to do a parking garage, we were interested in working with him. We are still interested in working with him, and maybe there might be some opportunities there. But the other thing that I think is an issue, and I do appreciate the changes that you've made in your projects, and I know that you've spoken to a number of the neighborhood associations and the Historic Tacoma. I continue to hear, and I can see why, from looking at your model, concerns about the massing, particularly at the back along Westmoreland. There is a concern about the, the building starts at a lower elevation from the ground level in front, and then gets higher because of the ground level is decreasing in the back, and also because you are right up against a residential neighborhood. I'm not an architect, I don't pretend to be an architect, but looking at it, I encourage you to use whatever creativity you can to deal with some of what looks like a very large mass from a single-family home residential neighborhood to the mews, which are still fairly large at that point, to a very large building. It's still a fairly abrupt change. So, that seems to me, and from what I've heard, remains one of the serious concerns that people have. We would certainly like to continue the discussions with you. I hope this has been, this has certainly been helpful to me, I hope it's been helpful to you also. I do appreciate the conversations you've had with the neighborhoods, but you shouldn't assume that if you're moving forward with your initial application, that that's the end of your concerns dealing with the neighborhoods. I can assure you that they will be only continuing and increasing in intensity as things become clearer, and we would certainly welcome your continuing to talk with us on these kinds of issues also. One of the things-
How many have been used? As far as the question I would get asked.
Oh, how many?
Yeah, there'll be full compliance with the county's HPC.
Yeah, which is?
About nine, about nine units.
Nine, okay.
It's twelve and a half percent of seventy-one.
Mayor Porter, if I could make my comment about the community. We put this back up just to, just highlight, and we keep these tracks, so you do have a record of who we meet with. One of the reasons I think this team came to us, because they're used to working with communities, but if you go to our webpage, pennandquill.com, we are involved in community process in almost every infill project. We do a lot of this. And it's not the intention to end the process of community dialogue. It's only a point, in fact, we wanted to approach you soon. We felt we were getting to a point, one thing that concerned me, as I understood, is that council member Austin Lane and Councilwoman Williams said, "Well, we got to get, you know, get you guys in front of us, it's about time." We were about to make that request, because it's an ongoing process, as you know. We've had tremendous input. This building has changed a lot, it's in community dialogue, including with the council members being in meetings, listening and adding suggestions also, has really informed the process to create a much better building. There may be some things we can do, there may not, as we move along, you know, it's always that trade-off, as we've talked about, but it is definitely a stronger building, more responsive because of the community dialogue, and that's why we have the process. I will say that, you know, we do a lot of this, and I want to be, make sure that everybody understands, as we go forward, we'll continue to listen and do what we can, but one thing a client of mine said a while a few years ago, is that when you go through the community process, it's important for everybody that's involved to understand that they will probably be able to identify a few elements of their concerns that have been addressed in this project, and I think that's true. If you start, we can start to maybe, to help you all see the pathway that we've gone through, rather than just this list, and it's address the issues that we've addressed, so you can see where there has been movement. Because just showing we went from a hundred and ten units down to seventy-one, and we've taken a floor off, you go, "Well, that's great, but what have you really addressed?" The point is that everybody will see, most of them, everybody will see something in this project, at least a couple of elements that have been addressed, but there'll also be some things that they could not have addressed. Not everybody's going to get everything. So, what the process has tried to do, as we've gone forward, and this is true in our community process, is we've tried to truly listen, rather than come forward with a project that says, "Here it is, we hope you like it," and then go into a sales mode, that's not how this is worked, is to really help shape the project. So, the information we've received tonight is something we need to take back and try to do it. But I do have two questions I'd like to ask Mr. Siemens and Mr. Williams. With regards to the mews facing and dealing with, hey, Corin, what's more, Mr. Williams, you had mentioned the idea of possibly reorienting with two faces and working with that corner, and maybe there's something we can do, you know, we are stepping the condition of the garage there, that is something that you suggested. Is that something, Councilwoman Siemens, that would help your concern about that, as opposed to the rough change? Just so you give some guidance for-
Yes, I think that was a good suggestion from Councilmember Williams, and also, as I said, the size differential between that single-family home and the mews building, it seems to be, you know, really overlooking that building, or that home, kind of looming over top of it, and whereas that, that particular building, stepping it down a little in size also might help to make it less imposing.
Okay. With regards to the intersection, there is no way to provide access to this parking through Mr. Osceola's lot, and no desire to really open up that service bay through the Tacoma Ford building to go back in. So, the question is, part of, is the pedestrian circulation, as well as the access for the cars, is, would you, I take it you'd like us to look at both of those elements at that corner?
Definitely, yes. Yeah.
Those are two main things, thank you.
Okay. Well, I very much appreciate your being here. I was also very appreciative of the presentation that you made to the Neighborhood Association. I understand that you have been working closely with them. We very much appreciate that, and I think, as I, I think you've also said, I think it's made an improvement in the project you have to this point also. So, we appreciate your coming here, and we look forward to continue to work with you on this. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you all very much.
I really appreciate your approach.
Thank you.
Thanks.
As we are running a bit behind at this point, I think we will move directly to the next item on the agenda. I don't want to lose all my council members here, which is the resolution regarding the East Hampshire development. We go from one development project to another. Who is, who's going to be providing staff? Alana, Ken, are you here for that too? The East Hampshire?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi.
Thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you all very much. We appreciate all the information you've got, that's been quite nice, thank you. Give people a minute to get out of here. We're not rushing you out, we just have to go on with our agenda.
Absolutely, we're going to move everything out, clean up all the side.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you all, bye.
Alana, good evening, my name is Alana Blanchard, I'm a planner with the city. Tonight, I bring before you a resolution which was requested at the last council meeting in opposition to the self-storage facility at 6,300 New Hampshire Avenue, called, otherwise called the East Hampshire Center. And I believe we've been over the background several times, so I won't go over that again. Essentially, this resolution lays out all the different points of the commercial revitalization overlay zone, as well as the master plan, where the proposal does not meet the master plan or the commercial revitalization zone. And as you'll see, there are six pages of notations where, of whereas's, where the section or master plan page is notated, and then a point is made about how the proposal does not meet that section. And then, on page five, the now-therefore-beat resolve begins, which essentially opposes the use, opposes the approval of the Flumway Site Plan and the Site Plan, opposes permitting development that does not include street-oriented commercial uses, and opposes the approval of the site, any approval of a site plan, any site plan that is inconsistent with the Tacoma Park Master Plan and the Tacoma Park East Silver Spring Commercial Overlay Zone, and also supports the denial of the preliminary site plan. So, it sort of covers all the possibilities that may occur at the planning board hearing in terms of approval, approval of conditions or denial.
Well, I certainly want to thank you. I was very impressed by the resolution. It seems to me, and I'm going to, Bruce, I know he has some comments, it seems to me it really covers all the bases and covers them very well. Thank you.
And if I can, if I can start by moving the resolutions.
It's been moved on seconded.
Alana, thanks very much. I just now did a quick count of the number of whereas clauses in this thing, and it's got forty-two of them. And I really appreciate the thoroughness with which this covers the issues. I like how it takes each standard and says, you know, here's what the standard is, here's the criteria, and it doesn't, it doesn't meet this, it doesn't, it just doesn't meet anything that we wanted to do with the commercial revitalization overlay zone. I'm glad that we have the opportunity to get into this in this level of detail because of their having to go through the joint site plan review process with the city and the Park and Planning, and I'm very pleased with this resolution of opposing approval of the self-storage facility. I also note that, I see that, I think, coming up, is it the end of this week, there's a ceremony of some kind with the opening of the-
Oh, yes, the Easy Storage, yes.
Of the Easy Storage Facility over on Holton Lane, which I understand is the largest self-storage facility in Montgomery County, and we had unanimous approval of that facility by this council. It was a very easy process, and turned into a very good project with some street-level retail and addressing the neighborhood concerns. I wish we had been able to have that same type of process with this project, but I think this is the wrong place for self-storage. I think it's the wrong site. It's a gateway, not only to the city, but to the county and to the state, and the neighborhood concerns were not addressed in this process, and I am happy to see this resolution opposing approval.
Are there other comments on this resolution? Okay. Are there public comments on this resolution? Opposing, basically, the resolution opposes approval of the self-storage facility.
Jane Holmes, past president of Pancras Union Association-
Do you want to pull the microphone down just a little bit? There you go.
I support this resolution wholeheartedly. Thanks, thanks for all your hard work.
And Bruce, don't forget, it's the gateway to the western part of the United States.
We have one other step to go, right? After this?
Right. This will, first, there'll be a staff report generated by Park and Planning, and like Abernathy is here, representing community planning at Maryland National Capital- Abernathy is here representing community planning at Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission.
Let me, let me just suggest, and I'm not trying to be unresponsive to your question, Nellie, but what I'd like to do, if we can do this sort of a piece at a time, if we can do all of the public comments, and then we will, we'll make sure that-
Okay, then I'll let you go for it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Nellie, and we'll, and then we'll, once we've gone through the public comments, then we will go from a, where do we go from here?
Right.
Position. Actually, we probably should do the vote, and then do the what comes next process, so we'll do that. Are there other public comments? Okay, I thought there might be a few more, but if people are happy with it, then that's fine. Any other council comments, I, you know, is it, I think it's an excellent resolution, and I think it also illustrates, you know, there has been some discussion about what, what kind of zoning control or lack of control the city has, and what we've done is we have sort of a hybrid system where we have joint site plan review with the county, and this is, I think, one of the first full-fledged programs that's gone through, not the first, but one of them, and probably the first that we've been, I think that we've said no to, is that correct?
Yes.
It may be. And I think that we've done an excellent job, and certainly we can hold our head up in this process, knowing that we've done a very professional job, that you have done a very professional job, Joe, Alana, in terms of putting this together, and why we are opposed to this particular project. Joy, did you want to say?
Are we about to vote?
We're about to vote.
Yes, I just also wanted to recognize Ken Sigmund and the excellent legal work that was done to get us where we are, and I think a very good position, and echo that I appreciate the staff's work.
Okay, is there any additional council comments? If not, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The resolution passes unanimously. Now, do you want to talk to us a little bit about where, what happens from this point forward, Alana, and I didn't mean to interrupt you earlier, I just wanted to get through the first part of this?
Okay. At this point, park and planning staff would generate a report. Now, the developer does still have the option of coming forward with a new plan or a revised plan, and if the council would like to consider that at any further point, then this resolution could be revised. However, if that plan is not significantly revised, or revised in such a way that might meet this resolution, then that plan and the staff's report from park and planning would go forward to the planning board, and then the planning board would hold a public hearing for which there would be two weeks' notice given, the staff report will also be available on the web, and then city staff will be there to testify at the hearing, and anyone who is interested in the outcome of the planning board's decision should also testify at the hearing, and then the planning board would come to decision. Now, because there is a resolution, the planning board would need to have a two-thirds vote, which is four out of five members of the planning board, if they want to make, find, make a decision that opposes the resolution.
Do you have a sense of what the timelines of some of those things might be, you've given us a sense of what comes next?
It's possible that there may be a hearing in mid-April.
Mid-April would be the earliest, you think?
Possibly, I heard a date several weeks ago of April 10th, which is why this resolution came before you tonight, so this would meet the April 10th date, however, I don't believe it's been scheduled as of yet.
Okay. Do you have anything you'd like to add, do you want to come up to the table and add anything you think would be helpful?
Alana, can you introduce her again, I'm sorry, I didn't get all of that.
This is Malika Abernathy, and she's a new member, or she's actually been with Park and Planning for a while, but she's a new member of the community planning division that works in areas that are close in to DC.
That's correct, and I would be one of the staff members working on this project with Alana, and also with our site planner, which is Calvin Nelson, and he's the one that is doing the actual approval of this project, or this project so far, so, but I just wanted to comment and say that the April 10th planning board is not, we're not scheduling it for the April 10th planning board.
So it looks like it's going to be later than that?
It's going to be definitely later than that, because based on discussions with Calvin Nelson, the applicant has had discussions with Calvin Nelson, and they are still in negotiations with, with themselves, so, they're not, we haven't heard from them as yet, so.
And could you share with us any sense of where the planning, planning board might be in considering its own processes of how notification works on the public hearings? My sense was that they were gathering information on how to make their process a little more friendly to the public, and I know that in the past, in particular with this project, that there have been, there's been some difficulty in getting the timely information and the timeliness of the notification for a hearing, and a sense of, gee, you can show up at a certain time, and you may be there six hours later, there's no way to tell. Has there been any change in the planning board process to make it a little friendlier, or are they still considering that?
They have made a lot of changes to improve the public hearing process. I don't know the specific details of that as yet, but I can definitely get that information to you all as soon as possible, but the first things that I've heard that there have been improvements to the process, to make it more accessible to the community at hand, so make sure that information is provided to them in a timely fashion, so yes, there have been. And I can get those specific details to Alana as soon as possible.
Great, I know that the city provided comments on that process, and I just want to take this opportunity to reinforce, if you can reinforce to any of the folks you talk to at work, that we look forward to that continuing improvement in the process that will facilitate our residents' input and our input into the process.
I sure will, thank you very much.
And if you can also provide any information on timing to Alana, and Alana can get it out to us, because I know there's intense interest in the community, in this, in Bruce's ward, but also elsewhere in the community, we can make sure we can help you facilitate get that information out there.
Right, we definitely support the resolution, we feel that this use is not in any way compatible with the master plan or with the cross-zone, so we commend Alana and all of her hard work, and support, and support you all.
Not a sell-the-refer.
Well, we appreciate that, and we appreciate your, your understanding of the kinds of, kinds of concerns that the city has on this particular piece of land, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to the second item in our special session, which is a single reading ordinance regarding the cell phone contract, and I believe Mr. Hobbs is going to give us the very quick.
The, yeah, the current contract that we have with Verizon was a piggyback on the state of Maryland contract, which has expired, and we've negotiated with Verizon, and are going to piggyback on a GSA contract, which is actually better, and will save the city money. And it's a single reading ordinance, the money is in the budget in various departments, and we ask you to approve it.
All right, the, it's moved and seconded, Terry, do you have a thought, comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Porter. This, I think, provides us an opportunity to address an issue that we have discussed many times in the past, and that is our desire for GIS tracking of, we have talked about doing it with police cars, but a much more economical way to do GIS tracking is through the cell phones used by the individual staff members, and so I would like to see that we include GIS tracking on the cell phones that we get, it's a, it's a safety issue for police officers, and it also facilitates improved management.
Is that available on this contract?
I do not know.
We can, we can check into it. My understanding is that GIS tracking depends on two things, one is that the, the provider of the cell phone service have it basically turned on, and the second thing is that the phone that you purchase have the capability for GIS tracking, and if you need both of those things in order for it to happen, and I've also been told, and this, I'm getting way beyond my expertise here, that there are some cell phone providers who, who provide GIS tracking only in cases of emergency, in other words, if you dial 911, they'll provide that information, but otherwise they don't. So, as I said, I'm going way beyond my level of expertise, but I think that's something that we can check, but it may not be something that's totally under our control.
Could I add one more, one more thing, Terry, because I, we talked about this one, we heard about it, they're using it up in the police department in New Jersey somewhere, and I think it's a good idea, but to make it work, we also need a plan, because we can pay for GIS tracking, but until the department has a plan to take the information, utilize the information, we'd be paying for, you know, basically vapor, and so, if that's what we want to do, I think we need to say, find out what it costs, and have the department come up with a plan to use it.
We'll look into it, come back to the council with some kind of proposal or recommend.
I appreciate that, it's just, when I did check on the GIS tracking for vehicle tracking, it was the vendor themselves who said you could do, you know, if that's what you want to do, it'd be a whole lot cheaper for the city to do it through the cell phone GIS tracking, and certainly it would require some software on, on a computer and some type of a process for reporting, yeah, plan to use the information, wouldn't want to collect a whole bunch of information that we then throw out.
Well, I-
I just don't want to preclude our ability to do that on the cell phone-
I don't think this precludes us from going to another type of contract in particular time.
Yeah, the-
It's pretty open-ended contracts.
The deputy city manager has said he would look into it, and so, I think we should, my thought is that we should go ahead with this now, and then if we choose to change it or add it, it sounds like it wouldn't be a difficult thing to do.
Can we maybe put a future agenda item on to discuss that?
Well, it may be, might I suggest that we get the information from, back from Mr. Hobbs first, and then if it's something that we need to further discuss, we can do that, but if you could come back to us with that information.
Sure.
All right, the ordinance has been moved and seconded, is there any additional council comment? Is there any public comment on this authorization to change our contract for cell phone service? All right, seeing none. This is a single reading ordinance, so will the clerk please call the roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross and Mike, aye. Councilmember Barrett, aye. Councilmember Clay, aye. Councilmember Howard, aye. Councilmember Seacase, aye. Councilmember Wade, aye.
All right, the ordinance passes, single reading ordinance passes, and we will take a short break and come back for the two work session items. a short break and come back for the two work session items. Could you explain that a little bit more? I'm not sure where you're proposing that. I mean, I see people crossing from that bus stop, which is right in front of the Rite Aid, over to the other side to get to the Safeway, obviously, or to get over to that shopping center. What, where is the Lebanon in relation to that?
The Lebanon is on the other side of the Rite Aid. Lebanon Avenue or Lebanon Street is on the other side of, it's on the rear side of the Rite Aid. And so it's, and it's almost directly across from Ann Street. It's just offset from Ann.
Okay, all right. Is there a concern that by moving, the concern that I have is that you're moving, right now the crosswalk is right adjacent to the bus stop. You'd be moving it farther away from the bus stop. And are people going to go farther away from the bus stop? Are they going to just cross where the crosswalk is now?
Both the bus stop and the crosswalk at that location are going to be removed. And in fact, across that location, there will be a fence. And the bus stop itself is going to be incorporated into the transit center. So buses will no longer be stopping at that location and picking up or dropping off people. They'll all be going into the transit center or adjacent to the transit center.
Okay, all right.
The second would be to support installing wide sidewalks with a landscape buffer to meet the master plan recommendations for University Boulevard and New Hampshire Avenue at locations where there's sufficient right of way and there's no utility or slow conflicts and where the property owner is willing to provide an easement or right of entry. There's large sections in front of the Safeway Shopping Center, especially where the property
Yeah, the ones I've seen that the county's put in, and I think, I know it's in White Oak and I've seen it on someplace else. If their, if the strip is treated nicely, it doesn't look half-bad. It doesn't look like what we feared it would look like along there.
Do people have other comments?
I have a question about the parking, or the parking, about the, about the crosswalk between the Taco Bell area and the Safeway area. It sounds like you're proposing moving it closer to the intersection.
There is a crosswalk on the other side of the intersection and we're proposing to add one on the inside of the intersection. So let me see if I can describe this better. There's a, there's a, there's a crosswalk on the west side, there's a crosswalk on the north side across the transit entrance, there's a crosswalk on the south side across the shopping center entrance, and there's no crosswalk on the east side of University Boulevard. So there's one on the west side, the north side, and the south side, but not on the east side.
So it's not a choice of that crosswalk that's not where the control of light is, where people just kind of walk versus, because the question, the reason I ask the question is, is there, is there something about how close the crosswalk can be to the intersection, the actual intersection of New Hampshire and University if it's not actually at New Hampshire and University? Because I know a lot of times you don't want to put a crosswalk too close to it.
They will, they do have crosswalks at New Hampshire and University on all four sides. And we know that one section of State Highway has asked for a crosswalk on all four sides at this intersection, but we also know that the infrastructure people are saying, well, there's infrastructure projects, we already have some, I'm sorry, infrastructure conflicts, we have so many poles at this location. But I think since they will be putting in new poles and things can always be shifted a few feet, that we'd like to see them, we'd like them to know that it's very important to have. For us, we like to see crosswalks on all sides.
But so there's not an issue, there's not an issue with it being too close to the crosswalk that goes across University at New Hampshire?
That wasn't right.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Yeah, that's not the crosswalk that troubles me. The one that troubles me is the first one you, you mentioned at the back of the Rite Aid building across University Boulevard because the current uncontrolled crosswalk that goes from the bus stop over to the Safeway side is one of the biggest problems that we're trying to resolve and we're putting up a fence to, to try to keep people from crossing there, but we're just, it sounds like suggesting that they move the problem down the road a little ways. And the other side of that is, I see the other side of the issue, which is that because it is an intersection, you can't have a fence there, so people may be crossing anyways. I guess, I just find it troubling that we're taking our problem crosswalk and suggesting we move it up the road.
I think that that crosswalk actually functions fairly well in that the people that cross there are fairly visible. One of the issues is that people cross at all locations and the fences will prevent people from crossing at all locations. Because the bus bays are being removed from that area and there is no opening consistent with the other sections of the project, a fence will be located at that crosswalk, at where that crosswalk would have been. In addition, State Highway will be installing a turning lane where that median is so that it will no longer be as safe. There won't be, you won't be able to cross four lanes, wait in the center for another gap on the other side because it will only be a four-foot median and that doesn't meet State Highway standards. So there's.
What about at the area where you're suggesting this new crosswalk go?
Right. And I would suggest that if they're putting that crosswalk in at that area, that the median be maintained.
I don't know. I still feel uncomfortable, but I'm not the expert on that. That's the only one of these proposals that I, seems a little shady.
Maybe where appropriate, you could ask if we could get the lighted crosswalks and that might help in that, in that situation in particular, since it's uncontrolled in any other way.
I actually asked in another context about lighted crosswalks and the answer that was given to me was that the county has put in its lighted crosswalks or if the city would like to pay for them. Of course, for now, we're dealing with State Highway, so maybe we can get them to do it.
About thirty thousand dollars, I think.
I know they're not cheap, but this is State Highway's dime, so maybe we can get them to do it.
There you go.
And one of the other issues at this location is that it's, the nearest controlled crosswalk is four hundred and fifty feet away, which means that if someone wanted to cross the street, they'd have to go a thousand feet approximately out of their way in order just to cross the street, whereas the way the, the street is configured, there's no fence to stop anyone from crossing at this location because there is a cross street so that vehicles are free to enter and cross over both sides. And we also feel that pedestrians should have a safe opportunity to cross at this location as well. And we would be asking for modifications in terms of building out a bump out through the service lane so that there is, there's less area that people would have to, to cross in order to reach the other side and also maintaining the island at that location.
Do people have any other thoughts? The next step is you're going to put this together in a resolution with comments for us and then we'll take that up as a formal resolution before the council. If there's no objections to that. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate the work that you've done on this one also.
Thank you.
Next item is the continued discussion of rent stabilization. We are still working on the capital improvement petition process.
As the mayor's indicated, this is the second in a series of discussions you've had or are planning on having regarding the capital improvement rent increase petition. What we'd like to do this evening is to give you an overview of some of the history of the activity within that particular type of capital improvement or rent increase petition, identify some of the challenges that we've experienced as staff and that have been identified by the landlords and the tenants in regards to the whole rent increase petition process as it relates to capital improvements. And then in the cover memo of your agenda item, we've listed out some bullets of some items that we would like you to give us some direction on, more general policy-related issues that we're hoping to take your feedback and then come back with you at a later date with some specific recommendations. It'll give us a little better sense of where we're going with this and if we're on the right track or not. With that, oh, and I've also included in your packet the information that you received at the last meeting regarding the various options that are available in other jurisdictions and included my presentation notes so you could kind of get a sense of it. We won't be going over that this evening, but there may be occasion to refer to that. So with that, I'm going to turn over Jean Kerr, who does the day-to-day oversight of our capital improvement rent increase petition. Jean?
In your packet, I did a statistics on how many capital improvement petitions were filed from two thousand to two thousand five. And if you look at it, it lists all thirty-two in two thousand one. In two thousand two, fifty-six is capital improvement petition. In two thousand three, fifty-four, one hardship. Two thousand four, seventy-six capital improvement petition, two hardship petitions, and then in oh-five, fifty-three capital improvement petition. Also attached is a chart with a statistic showing the individual landlords and properties, the different type of petition, number of petitions that have been filed through two thousand, from two thousand to two thousand five. For example, the second property on the first page, seven-one oh-six, seven-one oh-eight, Maple Avenue. If you look at that, the landlord has four units. In two thousand, he filed three petition. In two thousand two, one. Two thousand three, one. Then in two thousand four, nine. And in two thousand five, three. For a total number of petitions for those years of seventeen. And also, there is another property, seven-eight oh-nine, where the landlord only had filed two petition, one in two thousand and one in two thousand four. So if you take a look at it, it will tell you how many petition we have had that landlords have filed over the years and how many times they have filed and the total number of properties that each landlord owns.
So this is the all-inclusive list?
Yeah, from two thousand to two thousand five. January first, two thousand to December thirty-first, two thousand five.
Just, just to clarify, if you're looking at the matrix that Jean did with the specific names and the property addresses, those are just the property owners that submitted more than one capital improvement rent increase petition for that?
Okay, so more than one in the entire period or more than one in a?
During the defined.
Defined year.
Defined period of time, which would be from two thousand to two thousand and five.
So there are some other owners who have filed one during that?
Correct.
Right.
Basically, there are thirty-nine property owners that have submitted over a hundred and sixty-eight petitions over that five-year period. I went through and looked at them just out of curiosity. And of those thirty-nine, eight have submitted ten or more petitions during that five-year period and we've got two that have submitted twenty or more. A majority of them have, have submitted two capital improvement rent increases during that five-year period. And if you look at the number of buildings that they actually own, they tend to be your smaller property owners in the sense that they own one or two buildings.
And is, can you characterize the petitions filed as having been valid or resulting in something or whether any of these were ones that for whatever reason didn't meet the criteria and didn't continue through the process?
These are all the petitions that were approved through code.
Approved, okay.
If you recall, in the earlier discussion we had of the capital improve, or, I can't remember what we called it, but we had given you a copy of what they call the PAD, the Preliminary Administrative Decision. And if, there was one that was quite short, there was another one that was more involved. And then the larger one, it showed that not everything that's submitted all the time for a capital improvement rent increase petition is actually approved for one reason or another. Are there any other questions, clarifications?
Well, one of the things that, when I looked at this, that sort of came across to me is I know people have complained about capital improvement petitions, but there are clearly some property owners here who figured it out.
Yeah.
Who seem not to have difficulty getting capital improvement petitions through. So it may be that the process is difficult to understand, but clearly it's not impossible.
If there are no other questions, if you'd like to turn to the very last page of your agenda packet, what we've done is identify some challenges that we have come across in the administration of this and also in terms of working with the landlords and tenants. And Ken and Linda are going to go over those and just sort of clarify for you what they actually mean.
Okay, the first one, it talks about the, essentially the definition of capital improvements. Right now, the code limits rent increases for improvements that are necessary to bring the rental unit or rental facility into compliance or maintain compliance with the code or provided to maintain the rental unit or rental facility in good physical condition and to main services provided to the tenants. Essentially, what it says to the landlords is you can only get a rent increase for repairing or replacing something that's already there. And the, maybe the unintended effect is that it prevents modernization-type improvements like, like additional electrical outlets for older buildings, garbage disposals, built-in microwave, ceiling fans, things that, you know, aren't luxury upgrades that we might want to encourage landlords, improvements we might want to encourage landlords to make. The next issue is that right now, the, the capital improvement process is set up so that you can petition for a single improvement only once. And then the, the rent increase that you get from that petition should fund future repair or replacement of that improvement. This is problematic for a few reasons. One is that it means that when somebody files a capital improvement petition, the rents analyst or staff has to go through previous petitions for that property and see, has this already been done? Do they have, already had their rent increase for this? Which, that's time-consuming in itself and it's also, is a little bit difficult because, you know, you're, you're comparing documents and it's hard to, for example, you could say replace sink, well, was that the bathroom sink or the kitchen sink? Or repair drywall, was that the drywall on the left side of the living room or the right side of the living room? So it's hard to tell whether sink one improvement is, has actually been performed before.
So you're telling me you can't fix, you can't fix that with, with a computerized form that says, that just says what are the things in a unit? And you fix the kitchen sink or you fix the bathroom sink? We are like, it's like, that's why we have computers. Why should you have to go through?
One of the challenges that we're finding as we become more sophisticated with this process is that the original, the reports that were submitted five, six, seven, eight years ago do not provide the same level of detail or the same level of information that we're receiving now. So it does become problematic. It's not something that can't be overcome, but it's one of the challenges that the staff and the capital, or the rent signers face is when they go through the capital improvements.
But I, when we, when we did this the first time, and I'm, and I, I read this and I was a little bit confused and I'm glad to have the opportunity to sort of clarify this. Basically, there was one of two things we could have done. One was to say that we would provide for a rent increase for a specific improvement for a specific number of years. At the end of that period of years, it rolls back. And then they can apply for another one for a limited period of years and at the end of that period of years, it rolls back. That's one way we could have done it. The other way was to say, okay, you put this rent increase into, into effect and it stays in perpetuity with the assumption that future, in future replacements of the same item could be funded under this same string of rent increases. We did what we did, which was to say, we're going to just put it into place permanently and then just let it go on forever at the, at the suggestion of the staff. You said this would be a better way to do it. I mean, we can do it the other way. We can say, okay, at the end of the period of the, when the capital improvement amount, when the, if we, I'm sorry, it's getting late. If the, if the intended life of the improvement is fifteen years, at the end of fifteen years, we can roll it back. We could do that. And, and I don't have a problem with going back. You said that that would be sort of impossible to monitor. But it doesn't seem to me that we can do both. You can say, okay, you keep your capital improvement in perpetuity, plus you get to add on every time you do a new, one of the same thing, you add another capital improvement petition increase on top of there. So there needs to be, you need to do one or the other. You can't do both.
It's one of the questions that we'd like to ask you for direction on a little bit later in conversation if that works for you, in terms of how you would like to deal with, deal with some of the capital improvements, in terms of it being a permanent, continuing to be a permanent increase in the rent, or if you would like us to explore the feasibility of doing a surcharge. If we were to do a surcharge, it would mean going back and reevaluating the amortization schedule, for example, because if you have a capital improvement rent increase petition that includes painting that's amortized out over four years or electrical work that's done for, I'm just picking numbers out of there, twelve years and something else that's fifteen years, then there needs to be a way of sort of standardizing that amortization schedule so that you have a flat surcharge that starts on this date and ends on that date, rather than you take three dollars off after four years, you take another five dollars off after ten years. That frankly would be impossible to administer. But there, there are ways that we can look at it to see what, what might work, given our staff capacity and the technology that we have available to us. But that's something we'd like you to think about in terms of when we go back and look, or when we go through and do the, finish up this recodification.
Ken?
Can I add something? You had said that a, an earlier, that a person couldn't come back and petition for a second increase on the same item. And I had said before last time you said this, that that's, that we wrote the law And I had said before last time you said this, that that's, that we wrote the law specifically to allow a person to come back and do this again. So here I am, looking at the law, and it says, no capital improvement may be petitioned for granted for a rental unit or facility more than one time unless upon the landlord's written request and for good cause shown, the commission determines another petition and rent increase is warranted for the same capital improvement item. This, when we wrote this the last time, the intention was, you come back and you say that the refrigerator you amortized at $600 in 2020 now costs $1,000, therefore I need a difference between $600 and $1,000. We were explicit, that's why we wrote this in here. So I'm looking at the code in front of me, and I see the ability to do that. And if you need, I don't know, I guess it's kind of frustrating, because I feel like when we pass something, there's this legislative history of discussion that seems to me needs to somehow get remembered so that it's not just reduced to the words on this page here. But we had this discussion, and somebody said to us, the very question you asked, and we understood that that would be unreasonable, and that's why this is in here. So.
One of the challenges that we face, that Linda and Ken will be talking about, is the fact that the way the ordinance is written, I believe it specifically references a special finding by COLTA where you could go back and reapply for the same capital improvement that you received 10 years ago or two years ago. But frankly, there's no really good definition of what a special finding is or a good cause is. And that creates some ambiguity in the ordinance in terms of, under what circumstances does it warrant rolling it back so that you can go back and reapply for the same capital improvement? So that's one of the things we'd like some clarification from you in terms of how you want, how much discretion might be a good word for it, in terms of, the staff level is something like that appropriate? How much discretion do you want COLTA to be able to have to make some of those decisions?
I believe that, I don't think there's much history of landlords asking for that special, you know, that consideration. And I think that danger is if it was, whenever something's more expensive than it used to be, I think the exception would swallow the rule in that case. So I think, pardon me?
What do you mean, the exception would swallow the rule?
If you could repetition for an improvement because it'd become more expensive since you, the improvement was last made, then that would probably apply to every improvement. And I think, like I say, I haven't seen this come up in a decision or be challenged by a landlord, but I think that probably the rents analyst's response when somebody says, can I petition for this again, is no, unless there are outstanding circumstances.
I think that, well, we're not drafting tonight, but my suggestion would be that you make a list of capital items, because what it shouldn't be is, I fixed the sink or I patched the wall. I mean, that's a whole other issue. The issue should be, I replaced refrigerator, furnace, roof, you named the capital item. Or, you know, I had to rebuild the steps in the front of the building, whatever it is, you know, something a capital item. That ought, you ought to be able to come back and get the difference. That is what we intend.
Well, that's one way of doing it, but just, and I understand you don't want us to discuss it now, but I guess I'm trying to clarify why it's listed as an issue for us to discuss.
If it hasn't been?
If I'm, no, no, it's not the point I was making. The point that I'm making is that it sounds to me like the answer that you're looking for is you want us to reverse the previous decision and go back to a system where the capital improvement amount increase is allocated for a certain period of time, which point it rolls back, and then it's reconsidered again, because that's the only thing that's going to answer all the questions that you've raised.
We're not asking you to do anything. We're trying to identify some of the challenges that we've identified in this process and things that have been brought to our attention.
But that's the only method that addresses those challenges.
You've got to give us some guidance. You give me, identify a challenge, tell me which way you think's the best way to address that.
I'm not going quite that far. I'm just, I guess, clarifying that opening up that last decision that we would not roll back the increases, and they would be in place for perpetuity, and they would cover the cost of replacing that, whatever it was in perpetuity. The way of addressing these particular, at least the numbers two and three, would be to reverse the decision that we made before and have them rolled back after a certain period of time and then reapplied for. That would, in fact, take care of those two things.
The other option you have is to, or is to make a decision that these are not significant enough to go back on previous policy decisions and not to make any changes in the ordinance to address them.
Right, right. There's always a no build option.
There's always, you always have the option of continuing the administrative aspects of the ordinance or the ordinance itself in its current form.
Okay, well, can we go through the list that they've got, and then, then you want sort of some guidance on this list? Is that what you're looking for?
Not this list, but the specific questions that are included on the blue page.
Okay.
Number four deals with the filing dates of a petition. A landlord has a period of six months prior to doing the capital improvements to file a petition for prospective improvements that they intend to do, or six months filing completion of the capital improvement to file a petition after he does the improvements. The exceptions are for those improvements that are noted in our code as immediate repair, and where the code gives one year for the landlord to file a petition where improvements are listed as immediate repair. We're finding that landlords are citing many of the improvements that they file where they've exceeded the six-month period as those that are immediate repair. So we really feel that the whole immediate repair issue needs to be more clearly defined in the code and possibly in the regulations. Number five deals with the amortization schedule. The cost for a capital improvement is amortized over a period of time as outlined in the amortization schedule. And these improvements with a shorter lifespan, such as painting, might result in a higher rent increase than those improvements with a longer lifespan. Cited in the document here is a sample of a single-family resident where there was exterior painting, the cost of the painting was $3,000. Because painting has a four-year amortization period, the cost that was granted, or the rent increase that was granted was $6,250 per month, whereas the cost for replacing a roof was $10,000, and the cost that was granted was $55 per month for the rent increase. So both increases remain in effect right now, you know, for the future. But we're, I guess what we're asking is, you know, in looking at this, does this seem fair? That the cost for something small with a lesser amount would have a larger rent increase than something that has, you know, overall cost of being, you know, like $10,000? Is that clear?
Can I just say that it's clear, and my sense is that the reason for that is that the smaller one with the shorter life cycle needs to be done more often, and therefore the accumulation of those costs starts approaching the bigger one, and therefore it's right.
We understand that, but when you have tenants, for example, looking at what some of this translates into, it's one of those areas that doesn't always make sense to everyone.
That can be explained.
We do our best at explaining it.
Plus, it should only hit one time.
As should the room.
Right. But you can't, you know, you can't come back every four years and do a capital petition for $500 for painting an apartment.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I mean, that's the way it is right now, right?
If you spent the $500 painting the entire apartment, if you spent $500 painting one room, I don't know if that's a reasonable number.
No.
You could come back and paint the next room the next year and get another capital improvement.
And that happens quite often.
Right.
Paint the whole place, then that's all you can paint. That's all the increase you'll ever get for painting.
Correct. Number six, under the ordinance, landlords must notify tenants of the $1 amount of a pending rent increase in advance of the approval of the petition. The amount is stated in a letter that is sent to the tenants. What we're finding is, is because of the complexity in the computations that a landlord has to do when figuring out the amounts that the rent increase will be, he oftentimes puts the wrong amount in the notice that goes out to the tenants. And the rents analyst's responsibility, of course, is to review the petition and the accuracy of it, and he does do those changes during his analysis. And the final outcome oftentimes is a rent increase that is higher or lower than the amount that has been initially stated to the tenant. So we have been finding that this is, you know, one of the other problems that we're dealing with.
And our rent increases, capital improvement petition identified as prospective or not when the notice goes out? So that if somebody knows that it's a prospective one, that it could change?
You mean, in the notice is just saying, this is the proposed increase? I don't know. Do you need to visit?
It's Form 7. They use Form 7 that's in the RAG.
I think it's an exact amount.
I'm not sure if it's prospective or not, but that's the form they usually use, whatever we have.
So they would use Form 7 whether it was a prospective increase or not?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure if it's prospective.
Sounds like it. So that could cause the confusion.
We can check the exact language.
But also, they have to give the tenant a copy of the petition as well. So, and that does have the same amount that would be on Form 7.
I mean, a lot of times, the difference in the amount the tenant's been told is the rent increase differs by as much as $20 or $30, because, for instance, the computation of the financing maybe hasn't been done correctly, or maybe the landlord failed to include, you know, the cost of labor, you know, some major issue.
Doesn't the analyst ask those questions when looking at it?
Yes, but the petition's already been sent out to the tenants, and so the tenant receives all this information prior to the petition being filed.
Prior to being?
It's sent to the tenant at the same time that the petition's filed with the city.
And then it goes to the analyst, and then they find there's a mistake?
It's a parallel track.
Right.
When they mail, when they submit the petition, they do a mailing roughly at the same time to the tenants, which includes a copy of the petition.
How much time lapses between notification of the tenant and discovery of, who's sending and figure something out, right?
It varies depending, how long does it take, John? It varies depending.
Yeah, it depends on the number of units petitioned for. Two, sometimes three months, it depends. Or sometimes one month. If it's one unit, he'll kick it out right away. But it really depends on how many units are petitioned for. But the process takes about three months.
Process to get the approval?
To get the approval, right.
So it sounds like if the tenants had, if there was language in whatever the tenants see that let them know that this is the preliminary numbers and the final numbers could change, that could alleviate some of the concern. The only thing I'd ask is that there be some kind of timeframe, because the tenant might not object to, you know, raise issues about an increase at one level, but if it turns out to be $30 higher, it might raise, you know, issues about the increase at a higher level. So there ought to be something where if the landlord makes an amendment, that the tenants have time to respond to the amended thing, rather than the thing going forward and then discovering that it's not what you thought, and they didn't say anything because there's no big deal at one point, and all's, and it's a big deal. Because they are allowed to participate in the process, and their participation ought to be meaningful. So I don't have any problem with dealing with it on the one hand, but there needs to be some notification of an amendment and then give them time to respond to it. Sounds like a messy process.
Yeah. So you want, what you want us to do is to talk about the issues that are laid out on the cover sheet?
We'd like, on the blue worksheet, work session page, we've gone through and identified just some general policy questions that we would like some direction on. They're not intended to be, represent positions staff necessarily supports, but to give us some direction in terms of, when we go through and compile our list of possible revisions to the ordinance, from your perspective, what makes the most sense? What would be something that you would support? So if we could go point by point?
Well, I was going to say, I think the first item that you identified is really critical to the whole capital improvement petition process. And I think a place where we might do something different than what we've done before, and might be a way of sort of narrowing down. I will have to say, from my conversations with both landlords and tenants, it seems that everyone is unhappy with this process, but for different reasons, which I think gives you some opportunities to make it a better process all the way around. The complaints that the tenants have, the complaints that the landlords have tend to be about the process itself and how cumbersome it is and how difficult it is to go through. The complaints that the tenants have tend to be about things like landlords, you know, fixing, you know, if you fix one hole in my wall, it's not a capital improvement. Or if you fix six holes in my wall, it becomes a capital improvement, and why is that? Six holes in the wall is not a capital improvement. But if it gets up over the $200 limit, then it can be counted that way. So I think that there is some play between the process that we use and the kinds of things that are covered, and standardizing certain parts of the process so that they're not absolutely going to cover everybody's costs on everything, but they will be easier for everybody to work with. But I think there's a way to do this. And I, but I do think the issue about what the purpose of the capital improvement petition process is, is sort of the critical piece to start with, which is your first item there. Whether, what we're trying to do is to, I think, and if I can just answer my own question for a minute here. I think when we first, I was not around when we first started this, but in the discussions that I've been here for, we want to encourage landlords to maintain their units in decent and habitable conditions. On the other hand, we don't want to provide an incentive for them to upgrade what's now affordable housing to luxury housing and charge commensurate rents for it. And so that's sort of what the trade-off has been, and that's sort of driven a lot of the other kinds of decisions that we've made. At the same time, I'm not adverse to doing what you're, I think, suggesting, which is that in our definition of what's basic housing, that we expand perhaps the number of things that we include in that. We've had this discussion about air conditioning. Since I don't have central air in my own house, I don't think that's necessarily a basic amenity.
Good question.
But I do have a television. I even have a colored television now. But, for example, things like fans, I mean, I noticed that some of the other municipalities that have rent stabilization specifically encourage things that are energy-saving, and fans are generally considered to be energy-saving. So, I mean, there may be some things that we can do that would be, that would include more things under the kinds of things that are allowed under rent stabilization without our encouraging property owners to sort of take what's now affordable and make it into luxury housing. Between fans and granite countertops, there's a lot of space.
Give up four feet.
Or more. Then I would tell you. So, yes? I'm sorry.
Well, it seems like, in fact, this first question is something that we might want to get public comment on, because it does speak to the very nature of the rent control ordinance and what our stated objective is in having a rent control ordinance at all. Would it be fair to?
I mean, we could, we could.
Provide direction without giving people the opportunity to comment about this? Because we're in work session now.
But there's a lot of history to this. I mean, if you're saying the purpose of rent stabilization is to provide the opportunity to turn our affordable housing into luxury housing, I don't see what the point of it to turn our affordable housing into luxury housing, I don't see what the point of it is.
I didn't say that at all.
Yeah.
I said that it's just the very question itself. It, it does beg that question. I would say that the stated purpose of the rent stabilization ordinance is to provide a base of affordable housing. And, you know, personally, I would say that the market would determine whether folks wanted to continue to live in housing that is at the basic level versus at the fully upgraded level. But I, I would have to say, as a landlord, if I were, if I were a landlord in Tacoma Park, I don't think that the current capital improvement process would motivate me to put in granite countertops. I mean, even, even if that were allowed as a capital improvement now, I don't think that it would motivate granite countertops.
And that's by design.
Yeah. But, but it does, but I think it does say, you know, how we would adjust the capital improvement petition process could easily affect the strata of affordability of our housing stock. Would you not agree? And I think that question of what is the, the economic strip of people that we serve with our rent-controlled housing is, I think that's a, that's a, that's a broader question. I would like to hear what people have to say about it.
About who we serve?
Yeah. The way rent control is designed is, you know, it provides housing at a particular level. What, between $700 and $900 a month is what the average of most of our units are. So you're talking about people who are employed, not people who are living on, on SSI, because most folks who are living on SSI are at about 7, 750 a month, I think, at the, at the higher ends of the range, and about 500 at the lower ends of the range. So you're talking about a particular group of people who are employed.
Working for.
Yeah. Well, that's who would fit that at the 30%. That may not necessarily who's living in our rent-controlled unit, but that's who would fit it at the 30, 30% rate. So if you've got, if that's what our current stock is now and what those rates are, then we, we are providing housing that fits that particular strata of folks, even if the landlords don't always choose to rent to that group. That's, that's the economic strata that we're providing for. And if you were to change the policies so that people could upgrade their rental facilities and landlords chose to do that, you would possibly change the strata of folks that would find that affordable.
But why would you?
Wouldn't that be a bad, I mean, if you've got people who can only, you're assuming a strata that can afford $700, say $700 to $900 for argument, and we know that there's almost no housing in the DC area that fits that thing, we've got this housing crisis, we've got this affordability problem, what would we accomplish by allowing rents to rise so that we serve the higher strata and stop serving that strata, knowing that that strata couldn't find housing anywhere else? What would be the accomplishment we would point to in doing that?
Well, that's exactly the question.
What would be the policy reason for doing it?
I didn't place a value on that. I didn't say, I would support this or I would support that. I'm saying the fact that we're asking the question is, do we want to have it exactly like it is? This is what the question says. Am I misreading the question? You're asking us, do we want to keep it just like it is, or do we want to allow people to engage in a process that would allow them to upgrade the rental facilities and therefore potentially provide a housing that hit a whole different strata of people? That's the question that you're asking.
That's not what I read that question.
It's, it's a little more
Nuanced.
In-depth or nuanced than the intent of the question. The question was, basically, right now, capital improvements are pretty much targeted towards box standard stuff, you know, painting, you replace your kitchen sink, you fix the faucet, you replace the carpeting every now and then, but it does not necessarily allow for any upgrades that may be just part of the population's expectations regarding basic housing.
So which is different between a garbage disposal, dishwasher, I have a question with built-in microwaves, since most of us, and these must be lying, are still doing quite fine with counter microwaves, but at least the dishwasher and the garbage disposal seem to be things that are more, more, you're such a-
Yeah.
I wouldn't even use the word. So, so a lot of people expect those as what company houses.
But people's expectations-
But that's not the same thing as saying, allowing them to put, you're not suggesting that your definition of upgrade means garbage disposal, dishwasher, and granite countertops, and marble foyers, and saunas and the bathtub, if they want to.
There are no value judgments behind any of this. The question is merely, do you want to continue to keep the 1940s apartment units that are available in Tacoma Park now, or do you want to give the tenants and the landlords an opportunity to perhaps upgrade them or modernize them a little bit and recoup those additional expenses?
We have 50s and 60s ones here too, but it's unfair to characterize this.
I exaggerate.
I, I think that, I think the issue is a little bit, and, and when we've gone around this before, I don't think that we've had on the table consideration of saying, okay, shall we let the landlords, and it's really up to the landlords, shall we let the landlords upgrade them to non-affordable anymore? It's been, the intention, my intention, is to keep them affordable. And then I think the question of what is now considered sort of basic level, whether dishwashers and garbage disposals and stuff are now considered basic level, and that we will let landlords charge their tenants, because it's not the tenants who get to choose, the landlords charge their tenants for things like dishwashers, because are we going to make the assumption that this has sort of become standard at this point? That's sort of, that's, that's the way I read the question, at least.
One, one way of addressing that.
I was going to say, Carrie had a sound.
Go ahead, if you've got a way to do it.
Well, I mean, if we were to limit a category, I mean, and things like garbage disposals and dishwashers, because tenants have a right to challenge petitions, and if we were, we were to say that, you know, the landlord submitted this petition, and these items he wants to put in the garbage disposal or dishwasher are not items normally covered under this, they would result in X increase, is this an item you want to challenge or do you object to, who would at least allow the tenant to have something to say about it? So that it doesn't become carte blanche to do everything else and doesn't open up to every category. I mean, from my personal view, I could see entertaining a limited category of items, but I couldn't say, I couldn't see opening this up to whatever you want to do, even with tenant's permission, because I, because this whole thing started with a landlord who pre-selected tenants, who pre-signed for, you know, very extensive renovations of their unit, who would have, that would have radically changed those units. And that, this is sort of the nexus of where this began, because somebody figured out that you could put anything in one of these petitions, you could get rid of rent control simply by changing your apartment completely and removing the tenants because they couldn't afford to live there anymore. We, and so that's what made us put this and try to avoid that problem. So I don't want to open up that can of words and say, you know, you can do anything, but, you know, tell me what you think is reasonable, or come back with some guidance on a reasonable list. Add something to a reasonable list.
I'm glad I gave you the opportunity to go first, because I disagree with putting the impetus of this on the tenants to protest any petition, because tenants are somewhat limited in many cases by the fear of retaliation. So I think it behooves us to do, as you said at the end, to, if we were to do this, to come up with some kind of a well-defined list of what is acceptable and what's not. And I appreciate the question that you have on here. I think I understand, I think we understand now to be, do we want to allow this, or do we want to continue as we are now? And if we do allow for upgrades, then to what extent? I agree with Mark's later statements that we need to be very clear on what we expect from, from you.
The more direction we can get, the more time we'll save.
Right.
Are there any of the comments regarding, with the second bullet?
The second bullet, I'd, I'd ask you guys, I mean, for the same guidance, if we went this direction, as Kathy said, because she told us to go this direction.
Well, no, I, you know, we, we have talked about some of these things before, and I think the decisions we made were based on sort of policy direction, but also based on what we thought was feasible, and we sort of rely on you all to tell us what's feasible. And if you say, boy, something, we could do something, but boy, would it be a mess, we, it tends to discourage the council from doing those kinds of things. You may not think so, but we really did.
I mean, routines of repairs and maintenance are operating expenses. They get deducted on a person's tax statement as operating expenses. I worry about double-dipping on this one. I mean, I wish we could see people's tax returns, frankly, because I'd hate to see somebody, on the one hand, coming in here and using this as a capital improvement in order to get a rent increase, when it's really an operating expense, and then turning around on, on their tax return and not taking it as a capital improvement, and taking it as an operating expense to reduce their income.
I would guess that that happens all the time, because our definition of a capital improvement is different than the IRS's definition.
And I, and I think that's actually-
Perhaps we should address that.
Well, and I think that's actually one of the problems. I think we should restrict what we allow as capital improvements, because we allow things like painting and-
And repairing driveway?
Repairing, yeah, all those kinds of things as capital improvements, which they're really not.
Fixing a faucet is not a capital-
Yeah. So, and, and the implied question here, if I'm not reading too much into it, is that should the capital improvement rent increase process be for things that are real capital improvements, real major improvements in the property? And should we have some other system for dealing with these minor repairs in order to encourage people to keep their units well-maintained, but not run that through the capital improvement process? Actually, I think that's one of the things that has the potential both to simplify the capital improvement process and to, and reduce the number of things that are eligible, and also perhaps simplify and standardize the process by which we provide incentives for property owners to maintain their property. I mean, I think there's things you could do. Some of the other, some of the other places that we looked actually divide maintenance, capital improvement and maintenance, and provide some kind of standardized increase for maintenance items, which is fairly minor.
Why would you do that as operating expenses? That's- That's basically what the hardship petition was for, that they're operating expenses, because say you've got an older building, and say you're doing more maintenance than, than you'd like to, because you're, you're always going in, and you're doing pipes and faucets, whatever it is, then you're supposed to come to us and say, you know, this is costing me more to operate, I'm making the rate of return that I'm supposed to be making, so I need a hardship petition to get my rate of return up backwards supposed to be. And that was the way this was supposed to work.
We recognize that. Unfortunately, that's not what's happening. We'll be coming back to you with information on the hardship petition process later, but our experience has been, is that many of the capital improvements that are included within the rent increase petitions are routine operating expenses.
But that's just because they're smart, and because, and because they were misinterpreted. We had, we had this discussion several years ago about whether they should have ever been counted as capital improvements, but I would rather see this discussion focused then on whether the hardship petition process works, or how do we fix the case? Because we're really trying to fix the cases where somebody's operating a building and not getting the rate of return they're supposed to be getting, and we're making it through a hardship petition, and you're saying that's not working. So should we be looking at how to make that work?
People are not using that process, because many people find the capital improvement rent increase petition daunting, the hardship petition process is even scarier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and that's not necessarily the only alternatives. I think we have a problem in that we include things that are sort of normal maintenance as capital improvement items, and that means that basically the property owners who are savvy figure out how to do it, and the ones who don't, don't, who aren't, don't. And as well as it provides an incentive for people to sort of gain their maintenance, you know, you wait till a unit deteriorates to the point where you can do more than $200 worth of repairs, and then you do them all at once and you call it a capital improvement. So there, there's probably a better way to do it, to keep capital improvements for things that are genuine improvements to the property, the hardship petitions for people who are genuinely in a difficult position, and then figure out some way. Maybe it's going back and looking at the first thing that we looked at, which was the, the annual increases. Look at the components of what's in the overall CPI, and see if maybe we're using the right CPI, maybe there is, if there's a maintenance component in there, we're covered, if not, maybe we're not.
But wasn't that a question we asked in the beginning, was to tell us if our CPI was wrong or-
Well, I mean-
We're using the wrong index.
Yes. And I'm, and I'm circling back to that and thinking that maybe that's a way to address this kind of thing, rather than trying to push them through the capital improvement petition process, which would result in a great many fewer capital improvement petitions, which I think both the landlords and the tenants would like to see.
Thank you. I, I have a, I guess, a question that's maybe a little off-topic, but since Councilmember Clay put it on the table, I thought I would ask, and that is, the community that we serve, we know what our target community is for the low-income residents to have affordable housing, but there have been several people, including Councilmember Clay, who's raised questions as far as whether we're actually serving the target community. Do we have any way of assessing that? Is that part of your planned presentation later in the rent stabilization material?
We can pull that information together for you. That was one of the topics that was covered in the University of Maryland's most recent report, in terms of looking at what percentage of income renters in Tacoma pay, pay towards rent.
I'm not sure if they're an authoritative, authoritative source.
I, yeah, but there's also some census data that we can look at. It mainly is dated, but at least it would give you a, a sort of a, a better feel for what the, what the demographic makeup of the rental, rental population-
It's dated, and I would think that your records also show for that period of time what the rents were at that time, so it should be, it should be a easy matter of comparing what, what our status was at that point in time anyways.
Yeah, we can pull that information together for you.
Thank you.
I guess, what I'm sugge, what I was suggesting was sort of what's implied in the second part of that second bullet.
What?
Annual rent increase allowance adjusted to cover the cost of routine repairs and maintenance.
I have that on my list. Frankly, from staff's perspective, you need to, you can't just tweak one little piece of it, you have to look at it as a whole.
I understand, I understand. And, and the trade-off for that would be that there would be many fewer capital improvement petitions.
We would not be opposed to fewer capital improvements.
I, I think actually no one would.
I think when you reduce the number of petitions, that's when you're able to go back to the system of rolling back the rents at the end of the set period, and if they're for bigger improvements, it's going to be a longer period, so you're not constantly adjusting people's rent.
Right, right. Which is, I think, the third bullet, the topic you just brought up.
My sense is that most folks are interested, or at least willing, to explore the possibility of a surcharge if it's in fact feasible. Is that correct?
I, I think-
Like a temporary improvement cost? You mean making the charge temporary?
Yeah.
Right. For the, for the period of the amortization of the improvement, right?
Seems like more paperwork.
I, I don't want to go there.
Well, I mean-
And if you don't do that, I want to be able to make clear that you can add on the difference. And that seems to be the problem.
That kind of surcharge, yes.
Yes, if you're not, if you're not going to revisit it every time somebody puts a refrigerator, and I can see why you wouldn't want to do that, I do want somebody to be able to come back and say, I should be able to petition the difference between what it was then and what it is now. Because if that's what you're not clear about, and that's causing a problem, or will cause a problem, then we should fix it.
Yes.
Basically, I don't care which way it goes, but I think we should be consistent. If we give them, if we give them the thing in perpetuity, it should be, they can't come back for it, unless it's, as Mark said, it's a surcharge. I think that's actually your, are we to the fourth one yet? In, in terms of the issue of the, of the amount, I've always been sort of uncomfortable with that approach to it. I know it's easier, but I think if we narrowed down the number of things that's capital improvements, we wouldn't have to worry about the amount. I mean, if you said they're only big things such as X, Y, and Z, then you're not going to have the problem with the guy coming in to, say he spent $20 repairing a hole in the wall, or he spent whatever he spent, $100 painting a door, or whatever he did.
But if he painted the door, repaired the hole in the wall, um-
But no one calls that a capital item.
Yeah, but see, that, that's- Yeah, but see, that's exactly what I'm saying, is that right now you can do that. You could say, "Well, I painted the, I painted the door, and I repaired the wall, and I put a new lock on, so it's a capital improvement." And I would recommend a system where none of those things, either together or singly, get counted as capital improvement.
Every one of those are maintenance items.
Do you agree?
Okay.
One of the options that the council has too, is to follow the ordinance in DC, which looks at a multi-tiered rent increase process, where the smaller rent increases have a lesser maximum level rent increase. Right now, you can do up to 15% of your base rent to offset the cost of an improvement. In DC, they have it sort of on a multi-level basis, where the more extensive the renovation work is, the, I believe it's the higher the rent increase that might be allowed. Is that something you'd be interested in exploring or not?
How many cases have there been where people did renovations that were worth 50% of their unit? I can't, I don't know if I can even think of any.
There's really no reason to do that right now, because if it was a rental facility previously, you would never be able, it would take a very long time to recoup your costs.
I thought that was sort of interesting. I'm not sure that people understand the way it worked, I'm not sure I did completely. What is the impact of it?
It depends, again, on what the council would like to encourage. If you're interested in encouraging more extensive renovation of some of the older units, for example, that may have a lower assessed value. In the district, for example, or, and I believe in there's another jurisdiction, I misplaced it right now, is that if you meet certain threshold requirements, be it the value that you've added to the unit, or the cost of the improvement, you can recoup your costs at a higher level. The assumption is that the unit is vacant when you go through and you do the substantial or major renovation work, and that the new person moving in has not been displaced by the renovation work, or is not faced with a $100 rent increase because of improvements that were made while they were living there.
But, I mean, do we know how many of these petitions they get?
We can do some research on that and get that information to you.
I guess I would be interested in how frequent this is, and also what sizes of increases they're looking at. I guess the other thing that I would be interested in is sort of what, whether there's a pattern.
I'd like to see a hypothetical. Because the six-year buildings, for example, my ward is starting to go for about $600,000. Let's just say it's $100,000 a unit. So what would the impact be if somebody did $50,000 of work on a $100,000 unit that's currently generating, you know, 700, 750 a month in rent? So we can kind of put it in terms of how, what the effect on people will be.
This is a really exciting one, financing costs. One of the things that we would like to do at the staff level at least, is just do a flat financing cost. You don't have to argue about whether or not you put it on your credit card, you took it from your inheritance, or you actually got a good deal at the bank. Is that something that you would be open to?
I, sure.
A flat rate, like some percentage above some?
Two points above prime seems to be a real popular number.
Two points above prime, isn't it?
That's what everybody seems to be using. And then last, but not least, is, as Jean has indicated in the information she provided earlier, we have, there is an opportunity for a landlord to submit multiple capital improvement increase petitions during a given year for the same building. From an administrative standpoint, this creates some challenges, just in terms of it's a whole lot of extra paperwork. But then there are also costs assigned with each petition, in terms of the rent sam lists going out, looking at this one, and then coming back again for the next. Same thing with the inspector. We also think that part of it is due, in fact, to the fact that you have this six-month window of opportunity, either before or after you've made the repairs, so that they don't miss that deadline, that we end up getting multiple petitions. Would you be open to limiting it, or to exploring limiting it to one per building per year, with some flexibility in terms of the timing of those things?
I've always thought that the six months before and after was fairly inflexible. And so I would be happy to see more flexibility in timing, and I would consider, if there was a proper relationship between the expansion of the timeframe, that it would be possible to limit it to one a year, but without a reasonable expansion of the timeframe, I couldn't go for --
Six months is --
Agreed.
It takes me six months to find my receipts for projects.
And what do you do for an emergency? Because I could see somebody being hit with, you know, say if something bad goes --
A tree fell on the building.
Right. You've got to do the roof and some serious work, and you've done your, you know, your petition. And if you, if you need to do that, you may not have the cash flow to do it, unless you know you're --
Delayed maintenance, they should have repaired the tree. I know, I know, I know. We can look at those, we can look at those scenarios and come up with a --
But I think, I think the really critical thing is to sort of rethink the capital improvement rent increase structure, and focus it on big items that are real capital improvements. Replace the roof. And not on painting, and not on fixing holes in the wall, or, you know, getting rid of cockroaches in your kitchen, or something like that. And if we focus it on the big stuff, if we standardize the process, standardize the financing, and if we figure out a way to, through some other mechanism, and the implication that you have, which may very well be a good idea, is that we re-look at the annual increases to provide money in there for overall maintenance, rather than having to make people go through the capital improvement, and then we cut those items completely out of capital eligibility for capital improvement. I think you can make the process easier for everybody and fairer for everybody, and you will have many, many fewer capital increase petitions, and it will, you all's life will be easier also.
We agree.
As long as it's comprehensive.
Yeah. I mean, it's got to have both ends, so I understand that. But I think that really is the key, and I would love to see a system, you put together a system like that. That's really what I, after having looked at this for many years, think that that's really what you need to do.
Thank you.
Make it better, that's my suggestion.
If I can just provide my usual general comment, which is that whenever the council gets into the weeds on rent stabilization slash rent control, I always feel like there are unintended consequences to charging anything. And therefore, I'm loathe to change something unless I have a really good comfort level that it's going to actually be a win-win situation, because every time we discuss this, it makes my head hurt, and I feel like we don't know what we're doing, and why are we involved in this at all.
I think almost anything you do will improve this process, this part of it.
I just wanted to say that sometimes you don't really find out the flaws in how the process works until you use it for quite a few number of years. And so, you know, I hate it that we came to you how many years ago and said, "Let's do it this way," and then we're coming back and saying, "Let's do it this way." But, you know, you only find these things after utilizing it for, you know, five, six, seven years.
Right. No, I understand that. And as I said, I think if we figure out a way to simplify it and make fewer things eligible, that actually that will be a win-win-win-win situation, landlords, tenants, the policy, and the staff.
I'm not sure if the agenda's been confirmed, but I believe the next item is the hardship, unless you'd like to chat about capital improvement rent increase petitions again. The next item is the hardship rent increase petition.
There is a question, and that is, do you want to just sort of put this off until you get to the point of writing legislation? Or do you want to come back to us with a system? Because there's really, like, between the comments we gave you on capital improvement stuff, I mean, there's a long way from what we just talked to you about and coming up with legislation. There's a step in between, which is, okay, here's a new system, and here's how it would work. Do you want to save that until the end? Or do you, okay, so you don't want to come back to us with a sort of interval, saying, "This is what we've got"? All right.
Correct.
Well, I guess then, unless there's something you think more, you think we need to talk about on capital improvements, I guess we will go onto hardships. Is that, was that your question?
Yes.
Okay.
I wouldn't want to do anything where we're sitting here, putting this off.
No, 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 no.
We've been doing that for years.
The question is, do we need to, I think the question, if I'm understanding your question, is do we need to talk about capital improvements some more, or do we move on to the next topic?
Well, let's do another topic.
So I guess that's what I'm hearing. And I'm just wondering, because between what we told you, and you're putting together systems, there's a big gap, and you're just going to sort of try to put it together, and then at the end we go, "Oh, no, that's not what we meant."
That's why we keep asking what you'd like us to do, yeah. And, you know, the reality is, that might very well happen. But from our perspective, we've talked about this quite a bit in-house, and we really feel much more comfortable giving you something as a whole, rather than trying to sort of anticipate something. We want, we want to make a recommendation on one thing that is going to have a negative impact on another item.
Yeah. And I think the notion of sort of coming back to us with sort of the prelim stuff before you actually start, before we actually start paying Ken all that money to put together the new legislation probably makes sense, too.
Yeah, we'll work on all those.
We don't want to waste your time either.
He loves talking about rent stables.
Well, actually, from what I hear, you're actually, you're actually our, sort of our legal expert on that stuff, right?
I guess so.
Well, and he's also very good.
Good, very good. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn.